If I could have your attention, please. I'd like to call this City Council Workshop for Monday, July the 26th, 2021 at 3:00 PM to order. We'll begin with our roll call.
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
The first item on our agenda is the St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce Audit Report. It's good to have you here, Derek.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You're on.
I'm on.
You're on.
First of all, let me say thank you to the city, as always, for your help, for your partnership. We've enjoyed working with not only the council but with staff. There have been times when we've been able to bring some of our members directly to City Hall and chat with some of the staff members and been able to come to some good resolution. And so I commend Antranet, Andre, and some of those folks for helping us through those things. Thank you. So in your packet, what you'll see then is a report. We've continued to be an indispensable partner for our local businesses and an advocate as well. We continue to maintain both virtual and face-to-face event offerings, and we continue to work with the Economic Development Department of the city to pursue the things that the city would like to see done, and we're very proud to do that. From a community standpoint, then, as you remember, we had a Christmas parade last year that we were very pleased to be able to do. Hope, Love, and Peace was the theme, and we just met with the one and only Betty Dampke just a little while ago and started to get the plans underway for this year's parade. So we're very, very pleased to do that. The Third Annual Share of the Love Scavenger Hunt is coming up before long, and that brings people from around central Florida to come and see our landmarks and to patronize our businesses, and we're thrilled to do that. The 40th Annual Chamber Golf Classic saw over 100 golfers come in, also from around central Florida, to spend some time in St. Cloud and enjoy the things here. From an inclusion standpoint, we continue to offer Spanish-speaking staff members, RTW, the official photographer of the chamber, as well as our -- we had an Hispanic Santa and an African-American Mrs. Claus this year, and we've really got some comments about the spirit of Santa during that time. From an innovation standpoint, Mayor, as you well know, we've introduced the Sister Cities Initiative, and we're continuing to meet on that and reach out to some various communities, both here and abroad, for that. And we brought St. Cloud Young Professionals Networking Group under the chamber umbrella this year, and they are reaching out in a phenomenal way. From a leadership standpoint, women-to-women continues to grow, but it included this year a lot of conversation about mental health. We did a lot of work with Wendy Ford and with Claudia Swanger of Osceola Regional on those topics of mental health. We've participated in the Hotel Feasibility Study and the 10th Street Study and the City of St. Cloud Rebranding Focus Group, as well as the Florida Avenue Bike Way Project. From a virtual presentation standpoint, we continue to bring up a lot of topics there from a business standpoint, and our quarterly breakfasts this year have included the Osceola County Property Appraiser, Tavistock, Brightline Trains, and very soon we'll feature Mark Clinch and the Osceola School District's Smart Building Program. Then finally, from a growth standpoint, membership saw -- we took a hit. I won't lie about that. We took a substantial hit, but very slowly we've been adding back members. A lot of the St. Cloud businesses now are home-based, and we've been able to bring a lot of those back in and help them as they try to grow their business. Our ambassadors group has become very vibrant and a point of continual conversation and touchpoints with the businesses in the city of St. Cloud. From a celebration standpoint, we helped sponsor the city's initiative on Interviewing 101, that I think Parks and Rec did. We have been involved with a great many grand openings and ribbon cuttings and business after-hours. And finally, from an education standpoint, the chamber awarded $8,000 in scholarships this year to adults and to students. We're one of the few, I think the city is another, who awards scholarships to adults, and we're very pleased to do that as they change the trajectory of their lives. We entered into a joint event and partnership agreement with Junior Achievement of Central Florida. We have in the works a Signing Day Initiative where we celebrate those that not only do well in athletics but do well in the classroom and then are picked up by St. Cloud businesses. And we're really excited. Valencia liked that idea, and they're already coming in as a partner. So from an accountability standpoint, of course, we submit our monthly financials to our treasurer. We file our annual 990s through Chestnut, Bradley, and Hemp Hill. We do our filing through SunBiz, and we continue to have oversight from the Executive Committee and report to the city on a monthly basis through our board liaison, Councilman Askew. So at that point in time, thank you, sir. How else can I help?
Do we have any questions?
I don't know.
Well, I'd certainly like to say we've certainly appreciate the way you've encouraged businesses and you've worked with Antranet, Ford's for economic development, and I think that has been a great strategic partnership. Appreciate the way that you've supported that and been involved in that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think that's it. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you.
This time, we have a presentation by Toho Water Authority.
Mayor, if I could just speak for just a second.
Yes, sir.
If you recall, two years ago, Mr. Wheeler and I made a presentation about potentially having OUC -- I'm sorry, Toho Water Authority take over management of our water utility, wastewater facility. And, you know, I spoke against it, and then I was directed by council to come back with this presentation by Mr. Swingle, and he's here today to do that. And again, we're going to listen to what he has to say. As a fiduciary of the city, I think it's my responsibility to make recommendations, and I think we should look at ways that we can take care of our citizens and take care of our employees and reduce costs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Swingle.
Thank you very much, City Manager and council. Happy to be here today to speak with you. I want to first start off, and my name is Todd Swingle. I'm the Executive Director for Toho.
Thank you.
I want to start off just with a step back in time and a history of partnership, because regardless of any discussions that go on today, St. Cloud and Toho have experienced a longstanding partnership for the entirety of Toho's existence. That launched back in 2005 with an inter-local agreement that supported cooperative planning. We do have some system interconnects, and we do have some bulk supply agreements. We participate in certain regional water supply planning projects, most noteworthy, the Cypress Lake Project. And there are some degree of shared services, so Toho does host St. Cloud's customer service database. The discussion we have today is enhancing that partnership and the possibility of what that could include. The agenda we'll walk through is a little bit about Toho. Why is utility integration good for Toho? Why is this good for St. Cloud? And then potential next steps. So a little bit about Toho. We are a water, wastewater, and reclaimed water service provider that was formed by a special act of the legislature. That's all we do: water, wastewater, and reclaimed water. That is our focus. That's our priority. We were originally born out of the city of Kissimmee's utilities, so Toho Water was the city of Kissimmee Utility. It also included, then, merging in private utilities that were under the oversight of the county at that time. We are overseen by a board of supervisors that are representatives of our three-member governments, and our three-member governments are Osceola County, the city of Kissimmee, and Polk County. Our board consists of five voting members, two from Osceola, two from Kissimmee, and one from Polk, and a self-elected chair. Our board also includes one ex officio member from each member government, and that person -- that is one of the elected officials from that member government who sits on our board and is a full participant in our discussions but is a non-voting member. A few facts about Toho. We have about 115,000 connections. We operate 13 water and eight water reclamation facilities. We manage over 3,000 miles of infrastructure, and we have about a little over 380 authorized positions. Earlier this year, our board adopted a change in our vision statement. It's now listed as our overall principles and priorities, and it's that our customers, our community, and our employees trust that Toho cares, and with that, we prioritize providing safe and reliable services, protecting the environment, delivering value, and investing in the future. We think those are all very important things for both any member of the community but also specifically for a utility. So taking a little bit of a step back in time when Toho was formed and the member priorities that existed. First was to preserve water resource by promoting regional water supply planning, effective wastewater management, and proactive water, wastewater, and reclaimed water master planning, knowing that planning for these key infrastructure services was integral to planning out the growth of Osceola County and our other member organizations, including the city of Kissimmee. And actually, that was a time -- St. Cloud was at the table at that time as well. Maintaining control. Toho is a member-controlled organization. As you noted, our board is comprised of our member governments, and we do have the voting and ex officio representation from each of those member governments. The other goal was to provide accountability and equity, which was to equalize the rates across the Toho service area, which at the time was not the case. And then also retain the payment in lieu of taxes to members, which retains many of the existing benefits of owning and operating a municipal utility, and that is what you may know of as your general fund transfer. So as I mentioned, we were born out of the city of Kissimmee's view and -- or out of the city of Kissimmee's utility, and Mike Steigerwald, the city manager, is here today, and I'd like to just ask him to come up briefly, because he can provide the best representation of what Toho has meant to Kissimmee.
Have you all the way over here from Kissimmee?
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. Wanted to give the board an overview of just what -- how the experience has been with the city of Kissimmee, and having been not the city manager at the time but a department head, I was able to participate in some of the meetings and also share some of the concerns that doing a more or less a spin-off of our internal water and sewer department into a public authority and sharing it with Osceola County may realize. And so I think the biggest concern that we had back in the day was the impact on our revenues. The Water and Sewer Fund, which was part of the Water Resources Department of the city, transferred a set amount into the city's general fund and served as a revenue source. Going back to those days, the growth on an annual basis of that fund was pretty minor. Going back to 2000, the amount of funding that the general fund received from the Water and Sewer Department was $2.75 million. Just five years later, which is the first year after the merger, we were at just over $4 million -- or I'm sorry, $3 million, three and change, like 3.1 and change. Five years later, my first year as city manager and fiscal year 2010, we collected 4.35, and what we're projecting for 2022 is upwards of $8.1 million. So the revenue generation that concerns we had about turning the more or less our utilities over to another government, per se, really weren't materialized, and in fact, I think we've gained at a higher rate under the partnership with Toho Water Authority than we did as an independent water and sewer utility. And a lot of that is a result of the addition of the private systems that have been acquired over the years: the Harmony System, the Point Ciana System. The city of Kissimmee probably would have never required that if it had remained as a departmental water and sewer utility. The other benefit that we've received is, you know, just the overall reduction in the load that the Water and Sewer Department carried in the day-to-day operations of the city as an organization. Debt service significantly dropped. The amount of debt ratio that we had after the utility was spun off significantly dropped to the point where we no longer had difficulties in acquiring debt for capital projects and things like that. Our budget significantly shorter processed. Our commission meetings used to be held weekly, and we now do them every other week. And so the general workload of the city and the focus that the city commission can place upon the core services of public safety, police, fire, and EMS, Parks and Recreation, planning, and economic development was -- it allowed them really to focus on those things going forward. Things that we looked at that I think were important and are going to be important should consideration be given by the city of St. Cloud is that the employees need to be taken care of. That's, you know, one of the biggest concerns we had back in the day, and to this day, those employees that transferred over to the Water Authority share in the city's pension. Other joint members of our general pension board participate in that plan, and so they really haven't missed a beat. And then health insurance, we both share as well, which, as a larger entity with more experience, between the two entities, we have over 1,000 employees, and that really helps keep the insurance costs down as opposed to us as a city staying independent with our insurance and not joining forces with the Toho Water Authority. And then lastly is the issue of annexation. Unlike the city of St. Cloud, the city of Kissimmee, we've never had a connection requirement or an agreement that was required of development to annex later on down the road when they -- as a condition of connecting to the Water and Sewer Utilities. And so from that standpoint, we really didn't see much of an impact, but I think, Todd, you had it in your first slide, there was this equalization process. As a city, we used to charge the unincorporated customers of our water and sewer entity a 25% surcharge. And having that surcharge was great because it was easy to convince people to annex when, by coming into the city, they'd save 25% on impact fees, 25% on other rates. That has since been equalized, and so we really have seen a drop-off in the ability for the city to convince folks to annex. But on the flip side, that's given us the ability to focus more on things like downtown development, economic development at the airport, and our medical district. So, you know, at some point, from a policy standpoint, you have to decide, you know, what makes the most sense for you as an organization. So that's sort of my overview of, you know, what our experience has been. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Do we have any questions? And the overall morale from your city staff when you made this transition, how was that?
I think initially, there was a lot of concern, but over time, I think the Toho Water Authority salaries, they've been tough for us to keep up with as a city, so I think they benefited ultimately, and we saw more folks transferring over time from the city of Kissimmee to the Toho Water Authority as job opportunities became available. Folks like Public Works employees and Parks and Recreation employees that maybe saw some openings in field positions in Public Works or in Toho Water Authority, for instance.
Well, thank you very much. That's very enlightening. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Do you have a question?
No. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, Todd?
And I want to start also with why is utility integration good for Toho? Because first and foremost, as the Executive Director, I have the responsibility to my ratepayers for Toho and for the organization that I lead. I did want to go ahead and recognize that I have Hector Lizaswayne, who is our board chair here, as well. So Toho expects benefits out of this as well, if we were to integrate our utilities: improved regional water supply planning, economies of scale, infrastructure resiliency, and capital deployment, which manifests as cost reduction. I'm not going to get into each of these in great detail because, as we walk through some of the values to St. Cloud, it's the same topics. So I first want to talk a little bit about maintaining the value of owning a municipal utility. First and foremost, one of the things that you have today is that you have a seat at the table, and you're making those decisions. That doesn't change with joining Toho. Our special act is already structured in a way that, as we add a member government, that we have the ability to expand our board. And so similar, and on equal footing to the city of Kissimmee and Osceola, we would expect to add two appointed board seats plus that ex officio representation that would be one of your council members. We do continue with a payment in lieu of taxes. So one of the primary things that exists with your utility is that you do have a transfer to the general fund out of your utility. Yours is currently structured at 9.5%. We at Toho's, ours is capped at 12%. As part of an integration, we would anticipate being able to provide a guarantee that you would be at least at your current levels and that you would increase with those over a 20-year period at an inflationary ratchet. But to the extent that the utility was profitable and generating adequate revenues, that you would move up to that same 12%. And that is the same way your current ordinance is structured, and the way our inter-local agreements are structured is that the utility has to be making money in order to make that transfer, but it's something that we would anticipate. And then finally, and Mike just mentioned the annexation. So as part of the joint planning agreement with the county, you already have provisions where the county acknowledges the ultimate annexation boundary for the city of St. Cloud. So as part of that, when someone gets water and sewer within that annexation boundary, you require a signature of an encumbrance that then allows you to make that decision of whether to annex them or not. We do not see any issue with being able to continue to collect that encumbrance at the time that developments are moving forward through a development process with Toho as The other thing Mike mentioned, and that's equally important to me, and I know is very, very important to Mr. Sturgeon, is retaining that commitment to employees. So just like when Toho was formed, there was that commitment for the city of Kissimmee employees. If the city of St. Cloud and utilities and Toho were to integrate, we would -- we anticipate transferring all utility-funded employees. They would be assigned to a parallel job classification within Toho. Similar to Kissimmee, we would anticipate entering into an agreement with St. Cloud to provide them not only retention of their existing retirement benefits but the ability to remain in that retirement system for the remainder of their career and grow that retirement just as if they had remained with the city of St. Cloud. They would maintain seniority for service time and time and grade, so if we have a wastewater operator that has been with St. Cloud for 20 years, it would be just as if they had been with Toho for 20 years. And then finally, the efforts would be made to assign employees in the St. Cloud area. Just as with our employees, we have to make sure that we're able to balance out workloads and things of that nature. But we do see significant growth on this side of the county as well, both with our Sunbridge properties as well as Harmony, as well as the realization that many of your employees are supporting the utility that you already operate, so that need doesn't change in terms of supporting St. Cloud. One of the key benefits would be to stabilize rate pressures. So later on today, you'll be reviewing your budgets, and as part of that, you've got to project that your next five-year capital program is at least $145 million. There's always uncertainty in that as well. We're seeing around the construction industry, we're seeing significant cost escalation on plants and other infrastructure. You have a lot of capital that is dependent on growth, and so if there is additional growth or significant growth, that can boost those capital requirements as well. The other thing is, as part of the legislature over the last two years, we've seen a significant increase in the requirements on the water and sewer sector, requirements for additional asset management requirements, reinvestment in infrastructure. So all of those things are issues that we're monitoring closely and looking at our own capital programs but preparing to make sure that we're planning for the future. From an overall standpoint, there are -- you have a lot of those pressures that are moving forward, and there's really three different pieces that fit together: your overall capital program needs, your revenues that are generated by a combination of rates and impact fees, and then also any borrowing or bonding that you need to do. Borrowing and bonding is a common need in asset-heavy industries, and ours is no different. So over that next five-year windows, we do anticipate that you'll need to use those -- the three tools that associate with those different areas to either reduce costs in capital programs, increase rates or fees, and leverage strategic borrowing for capital programs so that you can make sure that you meet all of your capital coverage requirements, your minimum cash flow balances, and those types of financial metrics. I know you've heard a lot about alternative water supplies, and probably most about Cypress Lake, and that is a main project that's moving forward with the stopper group, which is St. Cloud, Toho, Orange County, Polk County, and Reedy Creek. It is a key part of our alternative water supply portfolio. However, Toho is also moving forward with additional supplies, including our Toho Reservoir, which is off of Neptune Road. Some of you may have known it as Judge Farms, and then also a Shingle Creek permit that we have in place along with our, what we call the 160-acre site, which is out at the western portion near 27. Both of those projects provide us an approximately 6 MGD of additional water supply. The benefit of having that diversified portfolio is that all of these projects are complex. There's always challenges that can exist, both with cost control, permit challenges, things of that nature. By having these additional projects in our portfolio, that does offer value to Toho and would offer additional value to St. Cloud as well. Moreover, it would allow, by fully integrating these utilities, it would allow spread of that initial alternative water supply cost over a larger customer base. As an example, Cypress Lake is a 30-MGD project. We anticipate the first phase is 15-MGD, of which St. Cloud's allocation is 2.5. That represents about 2.5% of your -- excuse me, 25% of your current water supply portfolio. For Toho, we are -- our demand is closer to 45-MGD, and our allocation is 6-MGD, so we're down at around 13% of our water supply portfolio. So that's a significant item that helps us control costs because the alternative water supply projects represent a smaller portion of our water supply portfolio. And then, as I mentioned, the risks that are associated with any given project. By having these additional projects available to us, it reduces dependency on any single AWS project. And throughout this presentation, one of the things that I'll talk about is resiliency and redundancy, because that's something that as a utility is vitally important, because just like your car, there's going to be issues that are going to arise. And so when that arises, making sure that we have, as in your family, having an extra car to go to, for us, having that extra plant or an extra alternative water supply project to go to is vitally important, even if it just means the timing of those projects. So both utilities benefit from improved infrastructure performance resulting in enhanced level of service by this integration. And this is an area that I want to highlight. You see a map off to the right. So there's value to Toho in this as well. So we have projects that are -- our new Sunbridge plant that is serving that Sunbridge area, we are currently have a 1-MGD facility under construction, and it'll be shortly going -- being expanded to at least 2-MGD. We have a wastewater plant that's being constructed. Construction will start later this year for a 3.5-MGD plant. We have also our Harmony facilities. We have those same challenges that you do. By those facilities being standalone, there's benefits to more -- to better integrating with St. Cloud. Similarly, where you have a limited number of plants as a smaller utility, that can represent an exposure both for risk and maintenance, and it forces you to invest higher degrees and more capital into those plants to ensure that they're able to meet the reliability that you as a city council and that your customers expect. So expanding the degree of the interconnects adds reliability and flexibility. It gives us that increased treatment plant redundancy. It also reduces the cost of adding capacity by allowing delayed capital investment. So for instance, St. Cloud has an obligation to manage their new capacity, as does Toho. If we are fully integrated, it can allow expansion at a single plant rather than if we both have needs, expanding both of those plants at the same time. As we talk through cost savings opportunities, that's where much of the cost savings can exist, is in reduction of capital cost investment or delayed capital cost investment. Also, fully interconnected systems. Also, fully interconnected systems improve the ability to respond to infrastructure issues. I mentioned that issues will arise, and we see this. Recently, we had a water main break. But being able to isolate that water main and have multiple plants that were able to meet the customer demands on both sides of that break was vitally important to making sure that we were able to avoid much more serious issues. As a larger organization with our financial strength, there's some additional benefit to St. Cloud. It provides the economies of scale to reduce costs. Think in terms of things that we do that are the same between us as utilities. For instance, we both use the same customer information system. Managing that system takes resources that don't put water out. They are underlying for generating, for managing data, for sending bills. Running a single system is more cost-effective. Managing two AMI, the automated metering infrastructure backbones, managing two SCADA systems, all of those represent duplications of efforts that there are opportunities for lowering costs by having single systems that support a fully-integrated utility. It lowers borrowing costs because as a large entity, and we are AAA bonded, it allows borrowing that can be done at very low interest rates. In fact, just two years ago, we, to invest in our gravity sewer infrastructure, we launched an $80 million project through the WIFIA program that is promoted, that is supported by the federal government through EPA. And we were able to close that loan at just over 2%. And it's an $80 million project, but a $40 million loan with $40 million of Toho's money is put toward that project. There's a citation on this slide as well, that over the last 10 years, just through strategic borrowing and reinvestment and the strength of our credit, that we've saved an estimated $19 million in financing costs. Additionally, as a larger organization, it supports dedicated technical specialties. And as I travel and participate in national organizations, you can see this. At every, the larger-scale organizations are able to provide what is a, provide technical specialties that may not exist in smaller utilities. And so that is one of the items that we're able to provide, that can help support with identifying challenges, proactively using data, planning for the future, being able to address unique problems when they arise. Provides a larger pool of resources to proactively invest in infrastructure needs. So there will be, as challenges arise, as investment needs are identified, as infrastructure is aging, being able to identify where that is and balance that across a larger resource base has value as well. And then improves the ability to respond to unplanned issues, both financially and operationally, because there will be challenges. When you operate hundreds or thousands of miles of infrastructure, we operate over 450 pump stations. I don't know what your count is, but my guess is it's probably between 150 and 200 these days. With that many pieces of mechanical equipment, there will be challenges. So being able to have the additional resource base to respond when those issues occur is something that adds value as well. Finally, I'd like to cover, the last item is reducing rates. Because of the cost benefits that we anticipate through sharing those capital resources, the value that exists to both St. Cloud and to Toho, we would anticipate being able to support rate reductions for the St. Cloud customers. In some initial models that we've run, we estimate that 75% to 85% of St. Cloud's customers would experience an immediate cost reduction, and that full equalization to Toho rates could occur within five to 10 years. Now, the exact numbers that those, that would be translated into exactly who, how that would occur, how those rate reductions would occur, is something that ties back to identifying those cost reductions and what those cost reductions can look like. The more capital cost reductions that can be identified, whether it is Toho's capital cost reduction or St. Cloud's capital cost reduction, has the opportunity to boost this toward the more higher end of that range. So just as a recap, the high points of utility integration, continuing that general fund transfer, which we identify as pilot, reduced rates and costs, representation of the Toho board, an ongoing commitment to the community and employees, improved infrastructure performance, reliability, and resilience. And the value specifically of Toho is that we are a full-service provider of utilities. That's all we do. That's what we're in business to do. We offer those scale benefits. We've got a long history of partnership that I started the presentation with, and we are integrated with the community. So as we discussed, this is an introduction to Toho and a discussion of an opportunity that exists. I am happy to take questions. The next steps would be to develop a more formal proposal for city consideration. We do think that there's value of looking at this in the near future because of the capital cost investments that are occurring both in Toho and in St. Cloud, and the opportunity as those projects move forward, we don't want to miss out on those cost savings. However, we also recognize the city is going through a lot with the filling of your vacant council seat. We know that's a big deal for both the community and the city, and we recognize the timing. But we would like to be able to come back and have a conversation with you about a more formal proposal, hopefully as soon as that new seat would be filled. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. It was certainly an impressive and thorough presentation. Do we have any council, any council members that would like to ask questions at this time?
Well, for the record, I don't know if I have to do this. I did meet with Todd, and we discussed some of the things, some of the challenges I had with the water. I think everybody knows how I feel about the water. I don't, I really don't want to lose it. But I would be open to at least looking into, you know, see what the numbers are. I really want to see the numbers in the budget. I love our water system. I think we have two of the most brilliant minds. I think we lost one of the brilliant minds who now runs Toho, but... So I think we do have the leadership in place. We have two great people with water. I think we're running into some problems, and I really want to see the numbers crunched on both sides. I want to see what the City of St. Cloud, what our debt's going to end up being down the road. And then if we do feel like we have to pass it on, then we need to take a look at all those numbers as well, and what we're going to lose in the JPA, and what we're going to lose is leadership for St. Cloud. So, thank you.
Go ahead. It's workshop, you go first.
Okay, so a lot of, thanks for your time. A lot of what was discussed, to me, is, a lot of it's the floor of what we would need to make sure that anything would happen. Employees are taken care of, ratepayers, as you guys call them, we call them citizens and constituents. That's a big difference for me with us being on the dais, representing them as elected officials is different than appointed officials. And that's kind of one of my biggest challenges with the OUC agreement, which I guess this is kind of being modeled along the same lines. We can't sell the utilities, would be a management-type agreement. Is that, is that right?
There's an option to sell it, however, it requires a referendum vote of the citizens in the 66 and two-thirds percent.
Okay. So I guess there are, we do have two options.
And yes, this would be modeled after, similarly, but with the key difference being that the maintenance of the seat at the table on the board.
Yeah. Which, that's extra little nuance, but it's not, it was advisory, right? It doesn't vote?
No, you would have two appointed board seats.
Oh, two appointed board seats, and then one of us.
And then one of you that would also sit and be in a, be able to comment, but is the ex officio members are non-voting.
Okay. One of the annexation requirement that we have, I'm not the biggest fan of that tactic for getting certain development standards. I think we should just have those better development standards as part of the code. So that's, that's something that, you know, I don't really put too much value on. For us, I mean, we go through the budget every year, and staff goes through it essentially every day. This budget balances because of these enterprise funds and the transfers from those enterprise funds. If it was just based on ad valorem, we can't cover police and fire and anything. So it's just one of those of, we have to take care, take care to make sure that we maintain those transfers at the highest level possible while also providing quality service at a rate that doesn't break the bank for residents. One question, would Kissimmee or Osceola County get any extra transfers based on City of St. Cloud coming over, or is it just kind of based on draw the line where that, where that goes?
Just based on your service territory.
Okay. Because I have a feeling there are, in other utility-type agreements like this, whoever the first one is, gets a little bit extra once anything else gets bolted on.
It's not structured that way. There's, no. There are opportunities if St. Cloud wanted to have some exposure to the county as a whole. That would be a possibility of discussing it. But we anticipated that the most likely scenario would be that St. Cloud would prefer to have their utility boundary and recover the revenues that are generated from within that boundary. So that's the way that I presented is the most likely path forward.
Okay. And I don't know the, on the, on the rate reduction, I believe some of that's just going to be based on, there's no inside-the-city or outside-the-city ratepayer. It's all one ratepayer. So 30%, 40% of the meters are outside the city, getting charged a 25% surcharge. Those instantly go down 25%, right? Is that the, is that kind of what goes into that calculation?
That, we went through a model that basically took every customer that you have and looked at their bill and put it onto a rate proposal. So it's one example of a rate proposal. So that 75% to 85%, we didn't look at it specifically inside the city or outside the city limits. The vast majority of your customers use, similarly to ours, use less than 5,000 gallons a month, and that's where most of the rate reductions exist, is in those lower uses. Toho has generally some higher rates in our conservation tiers, so our higher-usage tiers, which we think is very beneficial to extending our water supply, being able to meet demands at a lower cost. And so it's in, so, but most of the benefit exists in those lower-usage tiers. But we have done that model, and one of the things if we were to move forward, we're happy to provide is an exact, is a model that allows anyone to ask themselves, what would this mean for me? Because we certainly understand that it's not just a city council decision, that you're making that decision on behalf of your customers, your citizens, that are going to want to know, what does this mean for me personally?
Okay. And then, when looking at these figures, to me, you know, right now with the water quality issues, we have a mess on our hands. And you guys would be putting a ton of money and contingency with this to try to clean that up. You guys don't know how much that would be. We're putting millions of dollars in every year to try to get, get this resin out of the system. I mean, that's one of those of, I almost feel like we need to clean up the mess first and then kind of have a fruitful discussion about this, so it's not, it's not clouded by that cleanup.
Yeah, that's not actually the way we're looking at it. We're taking your budget as a starting point. And so we have not, when we've done this rate analysis, we have used your budget estimation. So your numbers, the things that we have looked for in terms of cost savings are potential reductions in future positions that we don't think we would need, some of the reductions in costs associated with those duplicated services. Most of the cost benefit that occurs to both St. Cloud and to Toho exists in those, in some of those capital projects, and many of those are growth-related. But as an example, one of the things would be, in your capital program, you have significant expansions of utilities throughout your eastern corridor between your plants and the growth that's further east. We have, because we have plants further east, we've probably got the ability to eliminate some pump stations to pipe upsizing, some things like that, because we would be better diversifying that plant portfolio. So it's not as much that we're, because from a practical standpoint, yes, and especially as a smaller utility that is having to deal with the challenges that you deal with, it is costly. In the overall magnitude of your capital program, that's not the primary driver. And so we're not sitting here loading up these cost estimates, and we're working off of the budgets that you have planned for your organization.
Okay. And to me, some of that is also, whenever the map was carved up, splitting it at 192 doesn't make sense because you have to put a line down 192, over like in Harmony area. You have to put a line down 192, so do we, to serve half the side of the road. So are there, are there opportunities to do swaps instead for some of those areas, just to make sure that we are, we are putting capital and infrastructure in areas that make sense for us, and then that would make sense for you guys as well?
There's always some opportunities for that. I don't think they can get even remotely close to the type of capital cost savings that we think can, that can occur for a fully-integrated system. But going back to St. Cloud and Toho have worked together for 15 years to have interconnections, to do periodic service area swaps. We've been negotiating one here recently. So those are hard to do on a very large scale. But from a practical standpoint, yes, nothing changes in terms of our willingness to work with St. Cloud on those types of things that benefit both utilities. But there is some notable limits into how effectively you can operate as two distinct utilities. So there will, it would not get to the full level of capital cost reduction that you would have as a single-integrated utility.
Understood. And Wendy, just, I'm throwing out a number just to see if it makes sense in your head. I just pulled it up out of the CAFR. Was the transfer last year in the water 1.1 million about, and then the sewer 1.1 million, out of the 14 and a half million each?
Yes, sir. The transfer for the water division was 1,271,372. And then in the sewer, it was another 1,233,425.
Okay. And that's the number we're talking about of what Toho would transfer, kind of as that starting point?
Yes, sir. And they've already had fiscal year '22 budgets already so that they can parallel to as well as actual performances for the last two years as well, in all categories, both revenue and expenditure, sir.
Okay. And then, right now, outstanding, we have about $40 million in debt in water and sewer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And while I did not specifically cover that, as far, part of those assumptions is that we would buy down that debt, because your budget assumes all of the repayment of that debt. And so as we've assumed that buying down that debt is something that's factored into all of the numbers and the pro forma that I laid out.
Thank you. Just to clarify, buying down the debt means you're paying it off? Or what does buying down the debt?
Yeah, most likely. So there's two different ways to do it. We can either, we can either just continue to pay it, and it exists, or we can rebond it underneath Toho. So yes, it can go either way.
Okay. For the record, I also met with Mr. Swingle a few weeks ago and talked about this. So one of the big topics we've talked about in my tenure on council is, you know, what's the city limit and where's the water limit? And, you know, do we need to look at our service area? And, you know, I've always been very concerned about Cypress Lakes and that impending cost to the city. I think today's dollar is 60, 70 million dollars. That only gets us to 2040. And then, you know, our annual budget isn't that large, so, you know, $60 million is a lot of money. So one of the questions I had had when I met with them was, you know, how do we deal with development standards? I know the way we've been doing it in the past is with the water and sewer agreement. I don't know, I agree with Mr. Trace, I don't know that that's the most appropriate way to go about doing that, but that's the way it's been done in the city. So I think one of the big conversations that we would have to have is with the county, and we are having intergovernmental meetings with them to kind of put down, like Mr. Trace said, I think we need the appropriate development standards, not using the water and sewer agreement to go after that. One of your slides, and I'm sure, I just want to clarify this, but one of the slides had 20 years on there, but this pilot program would be, it doesn't have a sunset.
It does not. That's, that's correct. So now, the way we structured it with Kissimmee was that it was the 20-year at that guarantee, and then after that, then it moved to the straight. It's 12% as long as revenues align, but what we, that 20-year piece is guaranteeing that regardless of our investment that we're making, that we're guaranteeing that that minimum transfer would occur for that time period.
Okay. And then I had asked a similar question to Ms. Colazo, was about, I know there was the conversation about setting the floor for the general fund transfer in the agreement, and I said, okay, is that a good number? I don't know, you know, like, so we went back the last few years just to make sure that that number was an appropriate amount. And one of the items is, we're saying that the employees would be taken care of. I know that's important for all of us, and would go over to work for TWA but still be on the retirement program of the City of St. Cloud. And is that at the same pay?
Yes.
Okay. So you would take their positions and at the same pay? And then, would they be housed over here still? Or, I mean, maybe you haven't figured out any of those kind of details.
Great question. So this, obviously, a transition of this nature is a significant undertaking. So I would envision that there would be, truly be a transition period that is, would house your employees in your existing facilities, being City Hall, your joint-use facility, things of that nature. We do have a facilities master plan that we're developing, which part of that anticipates that, even for our own needs, that we anticipate building facilities on the eastern portion of our service territory. If we were to integrate with St. Cloud... If we were to integrate with Saint Cloud, we would have that discussion about what made sense. I would envision that, that we would build a facility that would house Toho's employees. Don't know exactly where, but most likely over on the east side of Saint Cloud, because that would allow us to support Saint Cloud, Harmony area, Sun Bridge, and even up into our VBL area.
So, you know, a lot of, a lot of good things have been said in the presentation and even when we met, you know, the employees are taken care of, the pensions are protected, the rates would be reduced. You know, those are all positives. You know, one of our major challenges we have right now is the, like Mr. Trace had mentioned, the issues with our water and the resin. And so that would be of concern to me to make sure that that's continued to be prioritized in, in, you know, like for us, it's a priority and we spend a lot of time and energy and effort and funds trying to, trying to fix the problem. So that would be something for me. But I, I agree with Mr. Askew, I mean, I think, and Mr. Trace, I think they're both saying, I would like to see specifics and details and, and all that to be able to really fully evaluate it. You know, a lot of, a lot of the, like I said, you're protecting the employees, protecting the pensions, reducing the rates to the citizens, you know, those, those are all good, good bullet, bullet points. But until we see like the details of, of an agreement, you know.
And I would just, I would like to respond to the, the water quality question. Absolutely. That, water quality for, is one of our, our primary topics of focus for, and really for any utility. And so as an integrated utility, that has to be one of the top priorities. And I think that's an area where, again, the additional scale and resourcing helps out because the, the workload, the going through, the flushing programs, making sure that those are aggressive, that puts a significant burden on the staff and especially as a staff of a smaller utility. So having those additional resources is something that I think is very beneficial in ordering to, in order to be able to sustain an aggressive response to addressing those issues.
Thank you. That's it for me.
I'd like to also state that I met with Todd and one of the board members to talk about some questions, concerns that I had. You know, my number one concern is that we take care of our residents, that first of all, we provide quality water, which includes cleaning up the challenges that we have now, knowing that if we did make this transition, that, you know, that kind of service would continue. I'm very thankful for Marjorie and her leadership and the staff and how hard they've worked. And I would certainly have no doubt to expect that to continue. To me, a huge advantage that certainly has, I think, all of our interests is being able to lower rates. I know it's easy to promise residents when you're in a campaign, we're going to do our best to lower rates. But when you get in here and you see all the challenges that you have and expenses and so on, it's just not quite as easy as people think it is. But if we could lower rates, I mean, that would just be a huge win for, for all of our rates. I mean, all of our residents, I'd certainly want to see some paperwork that our staff had worked on with you to, to see that that, they felt that was certainly going to be something that would take place. I certainly also echo what we've already heard, we want to take care of our employees. You know, they are, you know, their pension funds, their health insurance, and that they're served, served well. I guess if I just had to sum up one last thing, it would be taking care of our city. You know, we, we certainly receive a significant source of revenue from our water. And as the city around us, around, and especially in our, our JPA area continues to expand, because that's going to happen whether we want or not, to know that we would be able to tap into that continuing revenue. I'm deeply concerned about our debt and the size of our utility handling the debt that we have, especially with the Cypress Lake project and our own capital needs and just maintaining what we have. And so I would certainly be in favor of moving forward and at least having a presentation from you and our staff working together, bringing forward some type of formal agreement with numbers worked out that they've hammered out and worked out. And certainly having our city attorney looking all of this over to make sure that we're crossing all of our Ts and dotting all of our Is. So that's where I'm at. Do we have a consensus that we would be willing for the staff to move forward?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I guess we kind of started on second base on some of this of, this is a management agreement? Is that, is that the case?
I, I think that's the quickest and most efficient way to get it done, yes.
Okay. So what, would it be prudent to look at what a sale would look like if that's something that is another option? Like if it, if it's truly to, to, to just take debt off the books and get extra revenue, go to a referendum on selling or, I mean, it's just, it's kind of interesting of the management side of things only takes three people when the referendum is, you know, 30,000 people it takes to get convinced. So it's just, it's just one of those of, we kind of lost over that part.
Well, there, there are ways and, and Mrs. Sturgis and I have talked about, there's ways to value the system for a straight sale if that's what, if that's what the council would like. You can go through and try to do that analysis and get a feel for what that would be.
Right. Because we're, we're almost sole sourcing something, right? We're, we're taking, all right, our, our closest neighbor, let's go through this management agreement, getting annuity going and we get a couple of million bucks a year to help balance the budget. I mean, that's what.
Calling it a management agreement, it might be just a little bit too.
I distill things down too much sometimes, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's really, what it is, is it's an interlocal agreement between two govern, two public entities that are working together to basically, to provide the same service. So it's, so it's, it's as similar as if the city of Kissimmee and the city of Saint Cloud got together and worked on something that jointly benefits them. It's the same similar. They're both providing a public service from a man, from a, from a provision of services perspective. So it actually would be an interlocal agreement between the two entities that dealt with basically administration of the, of the city and provision of the service, administration of the system and provision of the service.
Because to me, it's, if you look at the OUC agreement, the ability to untangle that is almost impossible. And, you know, it's just one of those of, so we keep on renewing it 10, 20 years at a time because it's, it's difficult to.
And I'll just remind from a historic perspective, when the city had an entity agreement with OUC, the ability to untangle it in the first few years was not the way it is right now. So there wasn't an earlier, quicker ability to get out of the agreement if the city felt like it wasn't working for it. It only became more complicated to sort of, as you were, to untangle it as, as the system went on and as improvements and assets were put in by the city, by OUC, that increased the value of their investment. But had the city at that point, back in 1996, in the first few years, they realized it wasn't working for the city and the city wanted to take back full control of its electric utility, it could have done that a lot easier than it could now.
So I just want to make sure we put all that on the table of, it's not just one thing or the other, or yes or no.
Mayor. Go ahead. Just to add on to that point, I mean, that's the reason, fighting for the water, because if you do let someone manage it, you can call it what you want, once they, you get a hold of that, there's no way we're going to be able to purchase it back. I mean, OUC, I don't know what, they got 300 million assets in there, we'll never be able to get that back, although that agreement's working out good. That's what concerns me is that when the water and, and Toho's a great service, I have nothing against Toho, I just, I'm speaking for the citizens. I want to make sure everything's laid out, the employees, all that, so we can make the right decision. Because that decision, that's it. You're not getting your water back. Once you let that go, it's gone. So I like the idea of the possible sale. It seems like, you know, all the costs.
I wasn't suggesting that, I was just throwing it out.
Well, just that all the costs that our citizens have paid in taxes to build this system, we're just, it just feels like we're just going to let it go. But I would like to see the numbers. That's from both sides.
I, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Right.
Thank you very much for your time. We'll, I'll work with the city manager to identify and staff to bring back a, a more formalized proposal.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all the time and the effort and research. I know this has been a long, a lot of work and a lot of time put into this and we look forward to seeing what you're going to bring forward. Thank you very much and thank your.
Thank you.
Board members who are here. Thank you.
At this time, we will hear from our city manager and any and all proposals that he has.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, if you recall, next Monday at 3 o'clock, we have a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. And I'm handing you a document, I asked Mrs. Miller to come up here. And if you go to the second page, some of the discussion items that, that I will proffer to the county tomorrow, once you approve these. But we also wanted to go into this meeting with a plan. And if you accept that plan, we also have copies of the Envision Saint Cloud, a fresh new copy for you. Because we addressed that in this proposal here for a plan. So I'll turn that over to Mrs. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Planning and I have met a few times over the past week discussing the workshop goals that you have outlined, density development standards and estate lots. And we were looking for recommendations that we could provide to you that you may be able to use in that workshop. Part of the development standards was actually just mentioned in the last conversation, the water sewer standards. I'm happy to report that Osceola County really has updated most of those into their land development code right now. We're also, thanks to the JPA, seeing that Osceola County sends those contiguous properties to the city for us to, to review for annexation. And then we would be able to bring them in through our formal process with our existing development standards. So we're all, we've also had recent success that they have given us access to their project software and our planning staff is going to be able to start in, inputting comments for those projects within the JPA that are not currently contiguous. Regarding density development standards and estate lots, as we discussed internally, we believe that it would be best if the city council used our Envision Saint Cloud's plan and, and looked at asking the county and the city to together implement the, the standards that were in the Envision Saint Cloud plan and update both of our comprehensive plans. That was actually action item number one in the Envision Plan was to update the city of Saint Cloud comprehensive plan. So we're actually trying to take it one step further and say, let's do it jointly for the entire JPA area. And where the concerns about density and estate lots, those are actually outlined in the Envision Plan because there is a, I think it's called, the new neighborhoods at the rural edge. And, and those will help us with those estate lots. We have copies of the Envision Plan if you'd like to look at it again quickly. Also, on page, on that same page with the action items, number 18 was coordinate with Osceola County to adopt interim standards. For incorporating land develop, land in the study area consistent with the principles and framework of this plan. So our, our suggestion is that if we could get both county and city planning staff together on a joint project to update our comprehensive plans, we think that this will satisfy much of what we've been discussing. Also, we think additional, additionally, that we should work together using city of Saint Cloud mobility fees and Osceola County Northeast and Southeast District mobility fees to do a joint study to, to look at the ultimate roadway network within the JPA and then coordinate those needed improvements. And the third recommended action would be that we have joint monthly transportation staff meetings to discuss the existing planned and needed improvements to the transportation network within the JPA. We think those three things really will help with the discussion regarding density development standards and the estate lots.
I think you've certainly thought it through. Those are huge. Those are all home runs. Can we talk, say anything?
Oh, yeah.
Jump in.
Yeah, this is six and a half years of trying to get some of this stuff done. That's really where the, the disconnect between the county and the city, it's just, we, we just couldn't get things together. Why, you know, they would approve it, it would come to us and it wasn't the same standard. You're basically saying that we're going to put that all together and, yeah, I'm, I'm all for that.
Those are three huge areas to be knocked down some agreement on. Go ahead.
So I guess I kind of hear two sides of the story all the time, you know, like, like when I first got on council, it was like, the county isn't sending us the plans and we don't get to see them and, you know, whatever. Then come to find out, somebody had sent a letter over to the county and, and said, we're too busy, we don't have time to review this. Do what you want. Do what you want. And so then I feel like we've said this multiple times and I keep, and I'll hear like, yes, it's happening, but then I'll hear from an outside engineer who's like, well, we went to the city, but the city said, no, just go through the county and come to us when you're done. So I, I just want to make sure we're taking the ball, like we're asking for the ball? Are we taking the ball? Like, are we, I mean, what's, what's the disconnect? Because I feel like I hear like, yeah, it's happening. And then I'll hear, well, no, that's at the higher level, they're agreeing to that. But at the lower level, you know, at staff level, then it's not happening. So I guess, are we reviewing everything within the JPA right now?
Within the entire JPA or contiguous?
No, it never was contiguous, it was always JPA. Like, that's what we've been talking about, not contiguous.
We just received access to the county software so that we can start giving comments on projects within the entire JPA. However, the J, the JPA says that they have to send us the contiguous properties for us to take through our development process. And the county is sending us all of those. The only ones that recently didn't go through that process was Edgewater. And Ms. Caswell and planning staff, you know, presented to the city council that we were going to work together on Edgewater. But otherwise, everything has been coming to the city that is contiguous.
So then my follow-up question is, when you give comments, do they care? Because I, I believe the process, you plead the fifth.
I think Andre can answer that because I haven't submitted any comments.
Because I, the way I understand the processes at the county is, and maybe it's changed, but it's kind of a department of one and they can listen to or not listen to comments.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Regarding your question, in the past, when we provided comments, they were in the form of a memo or email directly to the development coordinator at the county. And they were either taken or not taken. There was no weight or le, or importance placed on them. Subsequently, we have now been included as an actual reviewer in their development review system. And so we are actually an actual reviewer in, in this process. So our comments will not be, for lack of a better word, ignored as if it's a simple memo from staff to staff.
Because I, I've heard that even internal county staff that make comments can get overridden. You know, it's not like back, I mean, I'll, I don't know if Keith remembers this, but back in the day, you know, every department had to say yes for something to move forward. And that went away a long time ago, like at the county. And so then the director of the department could just, you know, decide that comment isn't relevant and, and move on. So I just want to make sure, if we're, if we are a reviewing authority, they have to satisfy our comments, not just, you know, we're making them and then someone can administratively decide.
Well, we, we don't have control.
I know you don't, but I'm saying in this agreement, I want us to make sure that the comments have to be addressed to county, to city satisfaction, not just a staff person can say.
But what, what comments do you want us, if our land development, if we're asking for things that are outside of our land development code and they're in Osceola County, what are you, what are you asking for staff to ask for to be included for us to, and, and request that we ensure that they, that we're able to enforce it?
I'm not asking staff for this. This is in the conversation we're having that, you know, when the comments come in from the city, they have to be, I mean, it's not, a staff person can just wipe out the comments and say, I don't know what they put in the file, but that's what I've heard for years, is that even internal to the county, certain departments. But that's what I've heard for years is that even internal to the county, certain departments would make comments, you need a turn lane, you need this, you need that. And then they would just get overridden. So I just want to make sure when we have this conversation, like we have a full seat at the table, not just a, you know, somebody can, maybe it has to get escalated up the chain or something.
Well, I think respectfully, I think that's why you're having this meeting. Mr. Ashley pointed out that this has been a six-plus-year discussion. There isn't currently anything between any agreement between the city and the county that requires the county to take into account any comment that's made by staff here. And so they can read it, they can look at it, it can be inputted into their system, but they can simply not implement it or just say, we don't like it, we're not going to take it.
Yeah. That's what I'm just saying. I want to make sure we're doing something, not staff. I mean, like, I'm just saying.
That's really what Veronica's saying.
We want to make sure. And I also think, I mean, I like number one, but I feel like it's vague. You know, I feel like the county will go, okay, what do you want? Do we have a list of things that we want? Have we written out, like, what are the things? I mean, I haven't read this recently, but what are the things that we want? I feel like my conversations I'll have with county staff, they'll say, we'll do whatever you want. Just tell us what you want. You never, you know, you just say, I want better. And then we don't give, that's just the story I hear. So I just like, let's make sure, do we have a list of things that is being missed?
The Envision Plan.
I didn't read it. I just got handed to me.
Us coming up with new development standards for the subdivisions at the rural edge. It tells us to implement new cluster subdivisions. It tells us to work on complete streets. The major planning principles that we've been wanting to go ahead and update in our comprehensive plan and our land development code is, are outlined that we need to do that in the Envision Plan. And what we're saying is rather than us doing it separately from the counties and then no one matches, that we update both of ours together.
Right. I guess, so what's the timeline on something like this to change? Let's just say the city was going to go change the comp plan by ourselves. What's the timeline of that?
Well, so we were going to recommend that we have a consultant do this work.
Sure. I'm not saying you have to, is it a year? Is it three years?
I would expect a year.
Yeah. I mean, so, to me, I just feel like it's kind of vague, like, number one, like, it's a great idea, but we're not ready. We don't have any specificity. It's like, we're going to come up with standards for this. We're going to come up with that. We're going to do this. But, you know, so we, I don't know. I just think it would be better if we had more definitive items that we wanted to talk about. And then the joint effort by both St. Cloud and Osceola County, use St. Cloud mobility fees and Osceola County Northeast, Southeast. Well, I had brought up when Ms. O'Lory came to the meeting that they're updating their mobility fee structure right now. So why don't we partner with them right now so that we have a comprehensive mobility fee? So people aren't playing a game, like, to try to come one way or the other to get the best deal that they can? Like, why aren't we coming together? And I think when we had the firm come with the mobility fee, I think we found a lot of holes in that. So, I mean, are we going to ask them to do a joint mobility fee study? I mean, I think that would be, hey, let's partner on it while you're going through the process.
So the recommendation, that could be the part of it. We were saying to do the initial network study. And then that would help us build the mobility fee off of that because it would identify the necessary roadways and the necessary improvements to the network. And it would help us with prioritizing. That's one of the things that, when meeting with staff, they were discussing, you know, their concern is as development is happening quickly throughout the JPA area, that land isn't necessarily being set aside for these future roadways. And so they were looking to basically have more definition of where and how much, you know, what's the width that we're looking for, what type of roadway are we putting in there to empower them to reserve that area?
So I have one last comment on here. It says, the rural edge that would address estate lots and density. So refresh me what the rural edge is.
It's in the Envision Plan. Can you hand me the plan?
Well, because I thought we were going to talk about density in general inside the JPA.
So we were giving recommended action items as a potential for you to use during the conversation. We're not saying don't discuss density, but we're providing actions to help support you on the density discussions.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? I apologize, I was not part of the discussions as to those three items. What is it that you mean by density? Can somebody explain what's your intent when you say density?
See, got to be specific.
Because everyone has a different idea.
Well, for me, I feel like the density that the county has as like their minimums is just way too high. That's my personal opinion. I don't know how the other council members feel. I think there should be, for me, density makes sense in some places, like a city center makes sense. But not everywhere. I just feel like the density is way too high in the county personally. So that's one thing I wanted to talk about with them is about having opportunities for larger lots. And not, you know, and the county has changed land use and zoning down south of Nolte and that area. And I asked the city manager, I said, did any of that ever get coordinated with the city? I don't think it did.
I'm not sure which area.
I'm not sure which area.
Oh, the whole area south of Nolte, they changed it all into some commercial, I don't know what they call it. Maybe Keith knows what they call it. They've changed it.
The bus barn?
No, 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 no. They call it like, commercial center neighborhood, something CC. And I don't know, they changed all of it down there.
Oh, in any main intersection, I think they changed all the.
No, they changed, and they changed the floor area ratio that there's like no way you could meet it. You don't subtract out for ponds. I mean, they've just changed the densities. I just, for me, I feel like the density is way too high.
And that was part of our big conversation was the county's low-density residential land use goes up to eight. The city's goes up to four. So we were struggling with that and how to provide a recommendation to address that. And so that's where we kept coming back to the Envision Plan because if we can update our comprehensive plan, then we can start working on those future land use elements and identifying the density within that future land use designation and then update our land development code and properties with, you know, these new standards.
So the county's, doesn't the county's density start at eight?
It's three to eight.
Three to eight. Okay. Because some of their stuff starts at like eight or 13 or something. I mean, their density gets real high, real quick.
So that is, was one of our concerns. In our Envision St. Cloud plan for the rural edge, it talks about the density that's more about clusters and larger lots and so on. And the area that the county is proposing for Sector 5 and 6 is actually at a much higher density. And I think that's the conflict that we're experiencing right now that we're hoping to resolve through this joint effort of updating our comprehensive plans to reflect what was in the Envision Plan.
And what is Sector 5 and 6?
It's the area on the east side of the county. This, you know, the mixed-use district that's between those two lakes.
What page is that map on that you're pointing out?
33.
It's the area that would be along Alligator Lake, going through between there, connecting to over to 192.
The density around Alligator Lake goes really high? I thought they had a whole overlay.
As I'm saying, that's what they're doing, that overlay that has mixed-use designation that's much higher.
That's in the works right now?
Yes. And because of COVID, it sort of got slowed down. They had one workshop at the Heritage Center, and then they've had maybe one or two other virtual meetings since to discuss it. And I don't think there was a lot of support for it because the residents wanted a much lower density. And there was a lot of concerns. And when we raised the fact that our Envision St. Cloud plan showed that area as a more rural edge, that's where we said we need to resolve this.
Okay. Yeah, because I know, I mean, I thought when that Hanover went through and the whole Hanover fines and all the things that went through with that at the county level, I thought there was a whole lake advocacy group over in this area that had restricted some of that.
I believe that had more to do with the water quality and being able to boat on those chain of lakes.
Okay.
Do we want to leave density on there and just try to expound on that? Or do we want to strike that? What are you guys thinking? I mean.
I would leave it on there. We've got to understand what are we talking about density? Are we talking about a big house on a small lot? Are we talking about a house on a bigger lot?
Number of homes.
What are we talking about?
Number of homes. So to me, on development standards, is it 1,500 square feet we have as the minimum in the annexation agreement?
Yes.
1,500? Our current code is 900 or 1,000 square foot minimum. So like, we don't even meet our own code with what we're asking in the annexation agreement too. So that's something. And we're talking about this density thing. If it's just, we're talking about density, I don't even want to annex any of it because we need some commercial to come with it to balance out that tax base. Because it's just annexing more houses doesn't really get us there. We need commercial, industrial, other things. So that's more along the lines I want to go with balancing the Envision St. Cloud with the county's comp plan with hopefully our comp plan update when we get around to it. One big thing I don't see on here is just my simple stupid math of do we annex or not? With our ADVORM doesn't cover the cost of police, fire, or parks based on the way the tax structure is between the city and the county. Like, we paid for 100% of the county fire and sheriff. But then we also have police and fire as well that we pay for out of our ADVORM. So it's just figuring that out. I know other communities have different tax structures where sometimes if you, like in Orange County, if you annex into a city, sometimes you actually pay less in overall taxes with a higher level of service. Here, you pay for a lot of stuff twice. So if that doesn't change, I don't know how the annexation conversation kind of proceeds because we're just kind of digging ourselves in a bigger hole if the ADVORM doesn't cover what we need to pay for. On the overall city limits thing too, I know in our capital improvement plan, we have two fire stations, a rebuild and two new fire stations planned. Just making sure that wherever we draw these lines, we plan that stuff out. I mean, that's the biggest capital, single-place capital source that we have when we're talking about kind of where some of these boundaries are. And I have a feeling that if the county thinks we're annexing certain areas, they might not be maintaining things in a certain way. Roads, stormwater, fire station. So it's just, we didn't make a decision of that sooner rather than later. And that's a kind of a conversation point. And then on number two, I don't know how Orange County is able to do this, but in Horizon West, they have to go through a road agreement that essentially stipulates certain developments have to pay for certain sticks of road that they widen for lane before they can get certain development attributes done. I don't know if that's something that the city can do, the county can do, or it's something that Orange County has specifically in their code. But a lot of times it is in excess of what the impact fee would be. I don't know if they just had concurrency when you can still have it, and then that just kind of linkers through. But when we're talking through maintaining, you know, maintaining these avenues or the road width to make some of these connections happen, making sure that that development pays for it, in addition to ancillary things that they need to pay for. That, the agreement that came through the other day for Edgewater, where they just can't get reimbursed for more than 100% of the impact fee. But they don't really necessarily have to build all the infrastructure necessary or oversize it, just kind of, I don't know. It irked me some.
I think it had some language in there about that, that they had to pay for what their development needs. It did have language in there about that.
But they, but there are off-site impacts that happen other than just the road segments that they're building through the development. But if they just build enough road segment inside their development that takes up to the 100% of the impact fee, then there's no money that goes to fix other intersections, traffic signals, other things outside of the development. So that's making sure we talk through that. But that's probably a little more complicated than we need to have for this conversation. But to me, the simple math is something that I want to talk about.
Did I not phrase that right, Mr. Trace?
Oh, was that one piece?
That when I talk about lower property tax from county property is annexing to the city. I got the gist of what you were talking about the last council meeting, that.
Oh, I didn't go to page two. I was only looking at page one.
Yes, sir.
Me neither.
And then also, would that be phrasing proper for you? And what additional backup can I help you get ready for? Is there anything other that you'll need?
It doesn't have to necessarily be lower property tax, just making sure you're not paying for duplicate services.
Okay. I'll put that in duplicate services.
I mean, if you get a higher level of service for the same price, then that's great, right? Because typically, when you go from county-level service to city-level service, you should have a higher level of service, right? A lot of other parts of the country, it's volunteer fire station if you live in the county. And if you live in a city or a town, they've got, you know, their own fire engine and everything. So it's just that difference.
I understand. I'm just trying to put this down. And then Councilmember Matheny, for the fill dirt, is there anything I can support you with? Okay, thank you.
I owe you some pictures.
And is that not just filter, but like transition from existing to new development? Yeah, so just.
Field dirt has a different meaning to us, but. No, it's the fill, it's the fill brought in to the development and harmonizing with all the other existing properties around it is really more what I'm talking about. Because you go into, I'll get some pictures and it'll be really clear. But you go into a lot of developments, like Gramercy Farms, for example. You know, you bring in eight feet of fill, you're going to mess up the surrounding drainage, water table. You know, you're just, it's just going to happen. So my thought was, if you're going to go up in excess of two feet or something, for every foot you go up, you have to go 10 feet further away from the property line, you know. So if you went up eight feet, then he needed to be 60 feet away from the property line with their fill. And then you could have, you know, then that would make them not bring all that fill in. You know, they're bringing the fill in, there's a whole engineering exercise that could go.
So can that be transitioned from existing to, from new development to existing development?
Yeah, I mean, it's just harmonizing, really. I would just say it's harmonizing the fill brought in for new development and not allowing five, six feet of fill, not allowing, retaining. Like, I go into some neighborhoods and I'm just shocked, like, someone would buy this lot, you know? Like, your kid would just roll off of it and roll down the hill, you know?
So with this, are we providing to the county and county commissioners, like this map and these?
We will.
Okay.
We will. So everybody's on the same sheet of music. We'll tighten this up. I'll send it out again. I made a commitment to the county manager to get this to him tomorrow. So we'll tighten this up. And if you guys, I know you're all busy, but if you could look at it real quick by noon tomorrow, we'll get it out to him along with the Envision St. Cloud plan.
Awesome.
Sorry, sorry, Dave. Can you make a table, like, with some land uses and comparing, like, the number of lots between the two? You know, like, low-density residential in the city, low-density residential county, just to kind of highlight?
So just the future land use element densities?
Yeah.
Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
I actually love this. If you're talking about flying in an airplane and looking down at the ground, this is what we need to be doing. We need to be taking a look at our JPA. And if we're not going to annex in or things like that, if the county sort of, if we can kind of come to an agreement in the JPA, if you're going to build in the JPA, here's the standards, the city, it's the county, it's seamless. That's what I'm looking for. I don't have to, the people don't have to parade in front of us for over water. And then we can look at that as well. But if you can get this, I mean, this is pretty vague. But if you can get this totally in there and they can agree to this or redo this or do it together, I don't see us having any problems, really. A lot of this other stuff you're talking about will actually fall into place. So it's because we, you know, their standard is, you know, for six and a half years, they come to us with a plan that's already done. It's not to our standard. So we have to fight to try to get it to our standard. We try to lower the density a little bit. We don't want eight houses per acre. We would rather have four. So that's where the battle comes in. If you can get this off the line together with Andre and you guys, I think that that could get it. The detailed stuff that Keith and Matheny are bringing up, that could be added in there. But that has to be added in there because if you don't, they ain't going to do it. That would be my guess. So I think it's great. I think that people are asking me from boards I sit on, they're all concerned about the roads, the density and things like that. If we're both working together, I think we can get this done. But we've talked about it almost every year that it ended. So let's say, because there's talk up here about not annexing anymore, putting a fence basically around what we have and just saying we're closing shop down. The beauty of, if we can get together with the JPA and the county is that we now know what the standard is. We know we can get the impacts for it. We can pay for our police and our fire. We can look forward to the future. We know this is going to happen. We know what it's going to look like. That's, would be beautiful. That's not what's happening right now. I mean, it would probably be easier for the county as well. They, okay, here's the standards. It's got to be like this, like the Narcousia overlay or whatever we want to call it. The county has to move their stuff around when they're talking about the Narcousia overlay. What they're talking about the JPA, maybe that just gets blended together and the standards are the same. The land development code is at least the same for the JPA. Maybe it might be different if you're building something like Reunion or something like that. But if you can get this, I love this. This is, if you can get this down and get them to sort of agree to it. I'm still learning about the fill dirt standard. I've been looking at that. She's correct. That is a massive.
I'm going to take some pictures.
Right. And I drove around because we just approved something down there. And it is, now I see why they dug a deep, deep pond. Yeah, it's, I think it's going to come down to the JPA. And I like what staff's creating here. They know what the challenges are. The difference between the county and us is we approve the development. The county has staff approved the development. So there's a little bit difference there. So I don't want to go back to that. I like the idea of it coming in front of me. But when, I think when I got on board, that's sort of, we switched it. We took stuff away from staff. We became the decision makers. We get a lot of schlag for it, but at least we get to make that decision. So I like what you're doing here. Keep it up.
Thank you. And just to add, really, this is just phase two. So the envisioned plan was the plan for the entire JPA. And now we're trying to say, let's implement it. And rather than us updating our code and comp plan without the county's participation, we're saying, let's do it together so that we're not then just handing them what we did and saying, please do this. You know, so that we're hopefully doing it together.
But we definitely, I mean, I'm sitting up here with two engineers. They look into the fine details of things, which I love, but I'm more of a, let's.
Except if you look through like a microscope all day, every day.
Exactly.
Like, what?
Looking for flaws. This is, this is what makes a good council. And, you know, we get another person on board, hopefully they have great ideas as well. So I really, really like what this, where this is going. So, thank you.
I'm very excited about it. We've been talking about it, talking about it. It looks like progress is consistently being made from where we were four, five years ago. And I know this takes a lot of time for staff, our staff, their staff, and just keep moving forward. And I certainly like the proposals. I'm not so sure about what all they're talking about. But I do know, I live at Stevens Plantation. You walk 25 feet off my backyard, and I have a privacy fence, but it looks like it's three foot high. Yeah. And I'm looking over my neighbor's yard over my privacy fence because I'm up as high as my privacy fence is. I know what you're talking about.
Can I ask, just to make sure that I've captured our conversation, from staff in anticipation of the workshop besides the envisioned plan to give to the county commission, you're also looking for only one additional item, which was a table with the future land use element densities comparing city versus county? That's the only additional item that we're looking for from staff?
They're cleaning us some language, too.
Yeah.
Can I owe you some photos?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do you have something, Wendy?
Just a quick question, clarification on the financial that Deputy Mayor Trace made. What was the correlation, just so we can do some ninja maths together and simple math, of ad valorem that you spoke? Can I get clarification of that? What was the correlation?
In the, of like, in the Orange County example, or?
Either or.
Just go in Orange County's property praiser site, click on something in a city and then right outside of the city limits and just look at their millage. Their millage is split up a lot more and not just one county millage. It's split up into four or five buckets that go away when you annex because you have the same buckets.
So you're trying for us to take our ad valorem and kind of analyze if we had it in that structure, what we're losing out or what we're maybe duplicating in certain ways with ad valorem?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the only reason I ask is because we kind of briefly talked about that to add this, like, the financial component about ad valorem has other factors, as you know, that just don't involve, you know, level of service going in conjunction with ad valorem homesteads and all that. So I just want to make sure we had this extra kind of facet you want looked at, and we'll put some numbers to it just to be ready for it.
Yeah, and we can sit and talk about it, too.
I was going to say something. I guess I will and throw something if I'm wrong. So in Orange County, I know they own MSU for fire. When you move into the city, that goes away. I think that's kind of the.
And you pay your ad valorem.
And you pay your ad valorem to the city for that municipal service. Okay. Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
And that, the financial justifications that you guys are putting together for some of the big projects show that. And they base it on either ERU or, I think, per capita.
Per capita.
And you can just see in the numbers of the revenue and then the cost. And the cost far outseats the revenue. So we're balancing the budget with those enterprise funds that we talked about earlier of, to fill the gap of, for those services.
I just think that the other part that I could offer you is delta, is that, right, we're losing that, but we're also not providing that service again, so we'll delta out. Or we're not paying for that, having that staff anymore, right? So they'll delta out for those transfers that we're covering, certain things like additional POs, administrative support. So we delta eventually. Will we delta all black and all red? I don't know that just yet, so we'll get you those numbers. But I want you to take that and consider that as well, that we have two factors going into that. So that was my same question with this, is that you were right. I saw your math, but it added other components that were kind of, you know, without getting too complicated. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we can let out some of that stuff, too, just to make it make sense.
So we'll do, okay, perfect, thank you.
I got a question for Keith. So you're saying that when we, so we're going to annex this property and they're paying their county tax. When we go in, our millage, 5.28, is going to drop onto their account. So you're asking the county to maybe pull back on their tax a little bit? Is that what you're asking?
Or just look at the structure of things.
We're not pulling back on our tax, I don't think, are we? Okay.
Yeah, that would. Because you pay the 6.7 to the county and the 5.1128 to us.
And it continues.
And school district and everything else.
Oh, yeah. Been paying that since day one. Yeah, I don't know how they were going to.
There was a nice breakdown that the city did when we were talking about annexing all those folks in with the animals and all that. Like, there was already a table, somebody in staff created, comparing the county and the city. And I don't think the city was more expensive.
Now, when you did the, when we were talking about the enclave annexations as part of the JPA, and the big question that was being asked by the non-city residents, well, what am I going to be paying now if I come into the city? And there was an analysis. I think it was pretty much done on a property by property basis.
Right.
And everybody was shown at workshops, you're actually, you're.
Yeah, the fire fee drops off.
The fire fee, yeah. Is that $75 fire fee or something like that? I don't know how much it was, but. Yeah, I know somebody's already done a lot of that work. What? $225.
Right. Okay. Are we done?
I didn't know that. Back to me.
What else do you have?
I got my opening budget message. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Citizens and Community of the City of St. Cloud. It is my privilege and honor to submit for your consideration the annual proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. The budget is balanced and prepared in accordance with the city charter and the city council's strategic plan, goals and objectives. The proposed annual budget that not only meets the requirements of the charter and state law, but also represents an effort to deliver required services and infrastructure systems under sound principles of sustainability. The budget was developed consistent with the vision in mind of the highest city services priorities and remains our strong focus to manage and address sustainable infrastructure needs. During the budget year, the city manager's office will continue to diligently implement the council's adopted policies and directives by providing organizational leadership while maintaining a vision that focuses on the city's cornerstone initiatives, which are economic development, growth management, infrastructure, financial sustainability and professional workforce. Fiscal year 2122 centered on the city's strategic plan and how it has been impacted by the global economic factors. This year, the League of Cities conducted an analysis about the relationship between municipalities and the slow gradual recovery. The study statewide provided evidence and data on the needs of municipalities to recover and sustain. The simple reason for this is for cities to continue providing adequate levels of service to the community. This methodology drove the city's strategy this year specifically when making difficult decisions about prioritizing spending to balance the budget. The effort is with the intent to address the long and short-term fixes with structural imbalances. And that's been a directive I've had for several years, using fund balance forward. We actually have been reducing that for the last several years. The target was evident, ensure sustainable decision-making. Furthermore, the strategy is planned towards leveraging programs such as funding through the CARES Act and the American Recovery. These will assist to contemplate exhausting the type of funding for capital projects that were originally budgeted on a pay-as-you-go basis. Again, we received the ARP funds. We're in a holding pattern to find out what exactly the federal direction is going to be on how we can spend that and account for that money. The city has spent more than 1.7 million since March 2020 and continues to provide assistance and funding to support our local economy. Environmental resiliency, traffic management, construction projects management, intrusion by non-permitted activities and overall maintenance of public facilities are the main challenges that the city has to address. The 2021 annual budget includes added staff to address service needs, support personnel for department efficiency, replacement of vehicles, upgrade of technology and maintenance of effort to improve electronic capabilities. The citywide budget totals 171,269,590, which is 5.6 million or 25% less than the current budget. The primary reason for the decrease stems from an economic recovery approach when preparing the budget. More specifically, the focus has been to prioritize projects to completion in the funded year versus a continued saturation of capital investment that simply ties up funding. We're calling this a benchmark year. We are put capital projects that are continuing right now, we'll continue to pursue those, but we didn't add a lot to the program this year. Existing funding projects can be reallocated, prioritized and aligned realistically with the city's master plan. The general fund budget totals 59,071,184, which is 421,376, or 1% more than the current year budget. The primary reason for this increase is the addition of 11 new positions to the manning table in response to the operational analysis cut conducted by Matrix Consultants in 2020. In addition, we're recommending a 1% COLA and 2% merit increase has been allocated into the budget. On the opposite spectrum is the reduction of prior year fund balance and reducing contingencies to a sustainable amount. The general fund budget is partially funded with 8 million in prior year fund balance, which is 2,100,000 or 21% less than the previous year. General fund reserves at the end of fiscal year 2021 are projected at 13 million or 26% of operating expenditures. The city's reserve policy, Resolution 2011-185R, requires special funds reserves to be at least 12.5 of operating expenditures. This places projected reserves at 13.5 above the required amount. And as you know, the GFOA requires 16.5, and that's part of our performance indicators for our strategic plan. Ad valorem revenue, the city's largest single revenue source, is 15,754,685, which is 2,6117, or 15% more than the current year budget. The revenue increase is due to an 11.3 increase in property tax values. The city's millage rate is proposed to remain at 5.1128 for the eighth consecutive year. St. Cloud's millage rate continues to be among the lowest of other comparable cities in central Florida region. And over the last five years, we have seen a 49% growth in property taxable values in the city. More than half, or 51%, of the growth is directly attributable to new construction. Utility fees, water and sewer revenues total 33,687,886, which is 5.9 million or 27% less than the current year budget. The revenue decrease is due to stabilizing the utility to expected revenue performance. Citywide personnel services total 52,202,697, excuse me, which is 3,724,093, or 7.7% more than the current year budget. The increase is due to the additional of 18 new positions. Remember, we talked 11 before. That doesn't, didn't include the enterprise fund, so it's total of 18. In direct relation to the operational analysis conducted by Matrix. And again, talks about the COLA and the merit increase. Citywide operating expenses have total of 55,567,773, which is 18,709,313, or 25% less than the current year budget. This decrease stems from department reductions to balance the budget as a result of the realignment of projects. The simplest way to address gradual economic recovery is to impose across-the-board scaling down on all department budgets. Again, we're still not out of COVID. We don't know the financial implications of that yet, so we're preparing for that. This strategy is not micromanaging, but rather across-the-board streamlining, allowing departments more flexibility to determine which expenses are essential and which are not. I think we're going to get into capital pretty heavy later on. Lastly, I'd like to talk about organizational changes noted in the budget, including the building, maintenance and project management to transition to public works. Code enforcement will transition as a division reporting to the building department. And economic development has transitioned to the city manager's office. Additionally, emergency operations have transitioned from the police department to the fire department, and grants division has been transferred to finance and utility building to progress to environmental utilities. It's been my pleasure to prepare this budget for you. Not really. I'm just kidding. This submental meets stated goals, objectives and policies while providing for general needs. I want to extend a thanks to the mayor and the council members for their dedication in overseeing the city's financial well-being and establishing a fiscal responsible financial management apology, policy which serves as the cornerstone of the 2122 budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, if this, are you have anything else?
No, I think the next one's the proposed budget recommendation from the finance committee.
All right. Yeah, a couple of questions, because you threw out some numbers, but we had some mid-year adjustments. How many positions were added mid-year through the last budget year? Because then we held off on some, and then there were like.
We did.
Seems like 15 that were added throughout the year.
Do you have that off the top of your head?
15 positions mid-year, probably? That doesn't include reclassifications? Check me, boss.
Yes.
Yeah. 15, that doesn't include reclassification.
Okay, and then there was, was it COLA or was it pay increase? Or what was the?
We did a pay adjustment in April.
Pay adjustment.
We called it a pay adjustment because if you do a COLA, it starts compression.
A pay adjustment, and what percentage was that?
COLA doesn't cause, it's merit that causes.
I mean, you're right, I said it backwards.
3%?
Yes.
Because that's kind of what's missing some from this letter of, when you do a snapshot of last year to this year, there was, there was a COLA added mid-year. There were 15 positions added in addition to the, what did you just say, 18? So just.
Yes, it is 15.
Okay.
Well. I had a question on that, like, with the COLA and the 2% merit, because I'm like, isn't the merit what gets us into the compression mess? So why would we add? We're fighting our way out of that. So why not just make it a 3% COLA?
We could do that. As you know, we've commissioned a compensation classification study. Actually, this is the first time, we're actually ahead of the curve. So it's every four years by policy, and we'll have it for the next budget cycle. And doing the merit increase requires employees to meet the evaluation standards. It also stretches our money out through the year. So if we give it all upfront, we're front-end loading it, so.
But it also causes compression?
It does, but sometimes. If our last pay study works like it's supposed to, it shouldn't, but it could. And like I said, I'm waiting to see what the new study says, to see how we address some of those compression issues.
Me personally, just one vote, I would prefer to just do a 3% COLA. We can talk about that.
If I may, just in support, just to give more economics on it. So a COLA, by theory, people think doesn't involve compression, but it does. The way it's in the city right now, we've identified that it has done compression is that we have not given COLA to the pay grade. So as you have raised peoples, given them COLA, you have not given the COLA to the pay grade. So therefore, a guy coming in at the front hasn't received all this to catch up. So you're going to have compression regardless. So it's a misconception that COLA does not cause compression. It does economically. So we're going to equalize those pay grades as well so that this doesn't happen again across all boards. Because we have, however these pay grades, they have not been given those COLAs throughout the years as well to equalize the pay grades. And that's, you know, an economic function that we're going to fix right now with and address with HR as well. So just want to, a little bit of information about what the actual, what COLA does when you don't apply it to a pay grade.
So I guess I'm not following that argument.
So I guess I'm not following that argument. Explain to me, when you say not applying it to the pay grade, what does that mean? So like a new hire off the street-
Right.
Doesn't get the COLA, but isn't that what you want? You don't want them to come in and get-
No, because the falloff will be that you'll never hire anybody at base ever again, and that's what's happening right now. We're not hiring people at base, because guess what? They come in and they're like, I'd like to counteroffer at 23 versus 21, because the base still stayed at the low, it didn't grow with the compression of economics, right? So-
But isn't that a function of like the city's responsibility to adjust pay grades? I mean, because I think my job is like that, too. No one comes in at the base pay. Everyone comes in like in the middle, right? I mean, I'm just saying, my job experience, you got a range.
Sure.
No one comes in at the base. They come off a base in the middle or something. But then I know when they make offers at my job, they also look at who else already works there. So then they'll say, well, no, we can't give you that, because they know where the other people are located. So-
Completely agree. On a budgetary level, though, which is what you're kind of reviewing here, that's a huge swing, because if you budget based on how it's done in the city and it's been traditionally done, which is a snapshot of your base payroll at the time that we do budget, that means that you're budgeting for what you're paying, right? And if you are constantly increasing and bringing people higher than the base, you're swinging your budget, and that little $10, $20 a year plus benefits and burn continue to tick and tick and tick and tick. So this is, you know, a long marathon towards, that's not going to happen immediately, but that's how really compression starts occurring, too. So, for example, I'll give you an example. If right now we hired a technician, base price was $21, and you hired him at 27, and you have the next position coming up that is now sit it at 25, that person's going to come in and ask for 35, 32. If you have a deputy position, now you escalated that into the six figures, and you de-scaled all your deputies in that line, so you'll have to continuously readjust, because there's an imbalance there. It's-
Yeah, I get that. I guess I wouldn't give that person $27, then, because it throws off the whole shebang, but-
You had to have it. And what else apply?
Right. There are challenges with certain positions. We do have to go higher, you know, even above mid-range sometimes, because like I said, our pay is behind significantly in the market, and we make those adjustments. Again, so we look at compression, we look at everything, but critical positions, I've overridden policy a couple of times, just to make sure we got the person in here. So what we did, I think we did it April, correct me, might be that, the year before, we can do a 3% COLA, and then you just don't move the bottom range. Just say, anybody's, you know, the bottom stays at the bottom, and then everybody else that's already employed moves up. But again, you know, that's challenging, too. Like I said, I'm hoping, praying that we can fix it through this next pay study over a couple of years. We'll probably have to phase that in, but hopefully we can fix those compression issues.
To me, it just seems worse to give merit and not selectively compressing people. I just feel like that's a bigger mess. But that's my personal feeling. I think it should be a COLA. One vote.
I don't run day-to-day activity. I'm going to leave that up to you.
Yeah. We're just giving feedback, and then you guys are going to tweak.
No, I think it's a great discussion, and like I said, I just, yeah, we struggle because of our pay. And like I say, we can make those adjustments either way. It's not going to break the bank.
Are you doing that study now, or are you going to do it?
Yes. It's actually, it's actually already been bid, and we have identified the company that's going to do that. They should be hitting the ground in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So more to come.
I guess we're ready for the-
All right, move on. Page two.
Finance Committee's recommendation. Mr. Reinhardt here.
Is anybody here need to take a break? Are you all right? I'd like to say, first of all, we appreciate the work that the Finance Committee has done. You guys are volunteers, and we appreciate you rolling up your sleeves and putting a serving towel across your arm and coming alongside our staff. And you guys have done incredible work. We appreciate your faithfulness. We appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
We were looking for a COLA also.
Would you like that with coke?
3% of zero.
You want that with caffeine or not?
Well, thank you very much. This is my 17th board that I've, I started in '04. And this year, I have a brand-new board. I have four new members. And so, some of the things I was trying to implement with these guys, and I think it turned out really well, is this year, I wanted these, since they were new, to have really no idea what's going on in the city. So we, first thing I did was I recommended that we start touring some of the facilities. First one we did was the Fire Department. I wanted them to see, I did this before, was on another committee, Public Safety Committee, and got to see firsthand when people come and bring directors or whatever wants this and that, let me see what they're really wanting. When you firsthand, you go into the fire stations up by Kissimmee Park Road, it's terrible what we're doing. So it's good to see that we're investing in these guys. And Jason did an awesome job, giving us a tour, got to see different agents, just different departments, to see what they're going to be doing, training facility. It was really eye-opening, I believe, for the board members. Again, being new doesn't mean they lack in experience. All four members have their own experience offered to us. So I thought they did a really good job. I recommended to Bill and the directors that if we could go and visit more, that would really be helpful, just so we could see the Police Department, Public Works, all this, so we can get a better understanding. So I think they enjoyed it. I think it was a huge help for them, but I really, especially the tour of the Fire Department, really could get an understanding of why they need a new place sooner than later. And so when something comes up, we can make those recommendations to you guys, because obviously, I'm sure you've seen this as well. Like I said, I've done this for 17 years, and this is one of the best budgets I've seen come across. Not a lot of fat. I've seen a lot of fat in the past, a lot of fluff going on. But this year, I think they did, it was a super tight budget, doing what they could to offer the 2% merit and COLA with minus 25% overall, I thought was a huge, huge benefit for everybody. It was nice to see, because I've seen a lot of them, and it's, we've had some challenges in the past. So I thought they did really, Wendy or Staff, Bill, all did such an outstanding job, and you're going to see that shortly. So, some of the questions, and you were kind of talking about it, I actually spoke to a sergeant this weekend, and found out, and I brought this up briefly, but found out a lieutenant left St. Cloud to go to OPD due to pay. So I did a little research to find out, why is this, why are we losing a lieutenant, a highly-ranked person? It's pretty embarrassing when you find out. Starting sergeant's pay for St. Cloud's $25 an hour. Starting sergeant's pay for Kissimmee is $37 an hour. A lieutenant for you guys will start, starting lieutenant, start at $29 an hour. They're not even competing with our neighbor, not even counting, because I was thinking, why would a lieutenant leave St. Cloud? With all people, I love St. Cloud, why would you leave this agency? And their benefits, they have the best, by far, pension program. But when we're not offering them money, this person actually went to command school. We spent $3,000 or $4,000 to send them to a commander's school, not counting their salaries for that six months of attending, and they go right down to OPD. And they're going to make, as a starting officer, as much as she made as a lieutenant, a supervisor. I mean, you guys remember Donna Miller. It would be like Wendy getting hired and Donna making more money than Wendy. He was explaining to me, he has a subordinate who makes $4 an hour more than him. How is that possible? So that was a little alarming to hear, but I thought if you heard it, maybe you're bringing some of this up. Bill's aware of it. Wendy's aware of it. I didn't have the facts, and it was just eye-opening to understand. I thought it was a terrible decision on their part. Now, financially, is it really? She's not even, he's not even in the competitive ballpark of an officer, and this person was a lieutenant. So that was, that was pretty eye-opening to me. So just something to be aware of. Overall, like I said, that's a sidebar, because I just heard what you were saying earlier. Didn't mean to go on a little tangent there, but I really want these guys to be paid what they're worth. And sooner than later, or we're going to lose good people. We have 10 openings in St. Cloud, and we can't hire. Why is that? I'm not going to come to St. Cloud and get paid change. For all that I have to deal with, I'm not going to get paid such a low amount of money as a starting officer. I'll go to OPD, because they have special details. An OPD officer could probably make, with some overtime, $80, $90,000 a year with no problems. And we're barely making change here. So I think if we could figure out how to, and I don't know what it is for the fire, because I just heard about this, excuse me, I just heard about the pay thing, talking to the supervisor, and I was like, really? How is that possible? And yeah, he says, I can't believe it. He says, my subordinate makes $4 more than me. Never heard of such thing. So, that said, we reviewed the budget. Outstanding budget. Very lean, as I said. Mr. Hoagland's brand-new. He had a recommendation that he wanted to add, and so we added it to it, and I just figured he could speak about it if he would like.
I was most pleased, I don't know if I was as pleased in reviewing it as you were in making it, Bill, but excellent budget, and Wendy likewise, having gone through hundreds of these over the years. Two concerns. A, kudos for managing a very difficult financial period with COVID, and we don't know where number 19 is taking us. A 25% decrease is really tough, and we're seeing, you know, potentially the results of this. So we're hoping we can address some of the pay issues. The other thing I was most concerned with is the increased number of ransomware attacks. And we cannot in any way do anything to lessen our impact on developing the cybersecurity. And that's one of my concerns. In fact, the last thing we need to get slapped with is eight or $10 million little ransomware for us. And we, it's just amazing how often they're coming up in all different organizations. And so that's one of my concerns.
Well, I just wanted to bring that up. Since, again, new members, I wanted all the members to come, but again, they have jobs, and they weren't able to make it, and other appointments that they had. But I thought his recommendation, the whole board was very on board with that, and I'm assuming you would be on board with that as well. It's really, makes a lot of sense with what's happening in our economy right now. And so, as a board, our recommendation was definitely to approve the budget with this recommendation that he added to it, and also just, again, being mindful of, we're losing people in Fire and Police, more so, at least I know about the Police from what the Sergeant came in and started talking to me about. I was just like, just intrigued by that. So if we could keep that in mind, definitely get this Fire Department built sooner than later. It's going to be a huge benefit for them as well, I'm sure. But thank you, guys, for this opportunity. It's definitely a privilege on my part to be able to serve and work with representing as the community. And so I think it's a great opportunity on my end, and I've been privileged to do it for a long time, and hopefully continue to do it. So thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
By the way, that's kudos, coming from you, saying that it's a great budget. It means a lot to me. I've watched your meetings. I've seen you ask for everything in the world from staff, so thank you so much in doing that. And I believe we have insurance for spyware. Am I correct about that?
A million? I was going to address that.
Okay. But thank you, both of you. I appreciate it.
So I actually, during my opening, I missed that. I addressed it during the Finance Committee meeting, but we have taken and made a priority in security for the city from an IT perspective. We've increased our budget for that. In addition, I just asked for a review to make sure we have enough insurance. According to industry standards, we do, but I actually asked them to bump that up, just because of the cyber attacks we're seeing right now. So we did address that. The other thing I'd like to clarify, the 25% reduction, most of that is capital projects, really personal services. And I agree with Mr. Reinhardt, Sergeant Reinhardt. He's got his uniform on, so. But again, the Police Department has a collective bargaining unit, and we've negotiated with them in good faith, and the contract they have is in place. We have challenges at the Police Department, but, and I respect everything they do, being a former Public Safety official, but at the same time, I have 700 other employees I need to think, or 655 other employees I need to think about. And so that's the challenge, and that's why we're going to do the pay study. In addition to that, I've asked Chief Gaunt and Chief Reinhardt to look at, you know, how do we fix this? And maybe it's not just a raise, it's seniority pay, experience pay, something like that, to retain our officers. So that's, we are looking at that very seriously, and we're going to have to come back to you probably here in the next 90 days and say, we got to do something to fix this issue. So, but I have to have the facts to show you, and we're working on it.
All right. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Thank you, Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, guys. Nice meeting, Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Wendy, I think you're in the hot seat now, aren't you?
All right, here we go. Try to earn those dollars here today. Thank you so much, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. It's my pleasure to present the Fiscal Year 2122 Budget, and to go over some budget highlights and try to paint the picture for you quickly, so that hopefully we can get home in time to maybe have some dinner.
We ordered dinner.
Did we? All right. Never mind then.
You'll have dinner.
All right. So, you know, the picture's really simple. I'm not going to read to you, you know, every detail of this budget book. We're going to be going over variances above $10,000. We have some addendum items that I'll update you on, that you received a packet on the side. I'll explain what those are for for you. There were some changes from the Finance Committee that came about, and some highlights that both the City Manager, Deputy City Manager wanted focus on, so I will address those. The budget overall, 171, 269,590, and we are balanced. At this present rate, we are maintaining the millage rate at 5.1128. This has been the same rate, as you are well aware, and it created a positive increase of $1,928,741, or roughly about 15%. 50% of that was new construction, and we are at, and set the pace at a 96% current rate collection this year. Total general fund expenditures were $3,244,458, higher than fiscal year '21 by 6%, a 6% increase. The goal overall, the League of Cities created, and, you know, I'll paint the picture for you what we wanted to do for you. So in past practice, revenues were always looked at as what you historically had made for five years, did a little percentage increase, and said, there you go. I think that it is our due diligence to provide you a service that is much more organic, much more real, and takes in these fancy things we talk about, economic factors, financial development, diversity, culture, I mean, just how we're feeling every day, right? So make sure that we can give you a budget that doesn't hold you down, but rather allows movement and flow. Okay? So with that in mind, right now, the economy, one of the biggest things that's happening, if you've read the news, looked at the news, or do whatever, is there's a bottleneck in supply chain. It's hurting, right? It's like a teenager that just went through adulthood right now, doesn't know what to do, and so it's recovering. It's got a lot of bumps and bruises from COVID, so it's waking up. Things that we didn't have to provide supplies for, now we are again, because restaurants are opening up, especially in Florida, it's a big deal, because we're on Phase 3 comparative to California, which is not. So supplies are short, you know, let alone vehicles, you know, gas is going up, because people are tired about being in their houses and are starting to travel. That increases a little bit. But all these great factors, we incorporated them into your revenues this year. So in utilities, we looked at, you know, growth, commensurate to the DRC and what they're telling us the development was, falloff, delinquencies, and all these items that took into consideration equalizing. So we didn't reduce a budget. What we did is equalized it for success. The average amount of meter sales that the utility was running right now averaged about $10 million. We were projected to set the utility at almost $15 million, which they would have never achieved, and just set them up for failure. So we're leveling services to what they can do realistically without gouging them and continually pressing, pressing, pressing on. Included in the general fund is the same thing. We need to stay and live within our means. We're already pulling $8 million of prior year fund balance. Have we had to use it? Thank God we haven't, but we're pulling it. Last year, we pulled $10 million. So I'm happy to report, with the City Manager's vision, we reduced it by $2 million of what you have to pull of money that's not in your coffers, but in fund balance, right? A budgeting tool. So we're getting better, $2 million better. We only got about $2.1 million in ad valorem, with $3 million in new positions, just in the general fund alone. So put that in perspective. Okay? So just think about that as you see that. The majority of the $54.4 million that you see is not cash, right? It's fund balance forward across all funds. We reduced it by $44 million. We don't need to call on it if we don't need it. Don't call on it. Call on it when you need it through the year, through a budget amendment. If something comes up, we have it there. But we don't need to call it so upfront- But we don't need to call it so upfront. And we start producing and just grabbing stuff that just keeps us outside of our means. So, that's the entire page of this whole budget and, and the emphasis, very detailed data oriented decisions that are proven to you by fact. Right? Throughout the budget, I'll give you statistics. Overall, across all funds, 10% of your budget went to personnel services. 11% went to operating expenditures. There was a reduction of 64% in capital expenditures, reductions of transfers in, by 45% across, a reduction of 25% in debt service, a reduction of 65% in grants and aids, and overall 11% reduction in contingencies. That's your 25% reduction across all funds. Okay? What does that mean in layman's terms? We've paid more debt. We're paying off more debt. It's way better than what you saw in probably 2016 when we had high debt ratios. Contingencies, we gave council, as you'll see, about $2 million, almost $3 million in contingencies. We reduced that from $5 million last year to be more organized and centralized as to what you need. All right. Moving in, into, we are on just page 12. I'll give you a highlight of, this is the general fund highlight. We talked about just the whole concept of the budget highlight. But we have additional 11 positions, as noted, out of the 18 that were approved. These are brand new positions to the Manning. In human resources, one, senior procurement specialist, one, a deputy IT director, one, administrative assistant, one, administrative assistant in community development, one. HVAC technician in building, one, communications operator, two, in police, one aquatic supervisor, two grounds maintenance worker. Payroll fully burden was increased by $3.1 million, almost 9.1% comparative to the 20-year budget. This was attributed and directly by $1.8 million of increase just in salaries and wages, almost nine, eight and a half percent there. $67,000 increase in overtime. That's almost 8%. Pension increase of 694,433, or 12.4. This is, of course, as you increase the amount of people you pay, you increase the pension you have to pay. Reduction in, of special, in special pay of 70,000, or 9.3%. And across the board in health, dental, life, disability, FICA, this is due to the payroll burden being added. 611,431 in increase. This is 10% across due to the added positions to the Mannings. And then finally, $175,000 increase in emergency allocated overtime and a decrease of 114,483 in workers' comp and taxable reimbursement. To explain, the 175,000 is a different strategy this year. We've allocated for police, fire, parks and rec, emergency overtime for hurricanes, extra needs, in addition to the overtime that they already have. This is, you know, an emergency kind of a pot, if you could call it that. Other factors that contributed to the increases were reclassifications across many of the departments. As promised from last year, I promised you that public safety, the pension fund, while we're at an 80/20, 20% unfunded, I think it's our responsibility to leave it better than we found it. So, our contribution by actuary should be 32.35, which is what we're contributing right now. But I have upscaled that to 35% in the goal and the strategy to get us to 90/10, 10% unfunded. And that will be a strategy to deliver that program better than we found it with 90% funded. 1.8 million, or eight and a half in salary and wages included in payroll burden. Finally, an increase of 4,407,639 from that point to $5.6 million, or 5% increase in medical care for the employer. Overall, we, this is really just a preparation and a buffer in the event that our claims, as we don't know what we'll finish off, come in any higher. We have a buffer to cover that. So, it's been budgeted a little bit higher. Really, the potential increase was in the administrative side as we changed over from Florida Blue to Cigna this year. It's really 57,400 in a wellness program to promote usage and inclusiveness and the administrative cost to administer that program. Okay? I believe everything else has been touched upon as far as, we'll review it on, as we go ahead in the budget. Your 20, on page 14, 2021-2022 budget is the proposed across all funds for you to view with 20% overall decrease. As, I'm not going to, unless you want me to, walk you through page by page. But this tells you other, our revenue sources in the general fund. Page, excuse me, 16 is the general fund expenditures, also excluding the $2,804,220 in contingency that we've allotted. Expenditures, of course, the largest expenditure portion is payroll, which is 38,168,551. This is that increase of 8.7% over the current adjusted year. On page 17, special revenue accounts. Obviously, these are restricted for the financing of particular activities and projects. In the 1%, a budget of 6,119,823, which includes a fund reserve of 1,925,643. Some of the items and purposes are listed below for you, such as in general support, which includes citywide building roof replacements, control system replacements totaling 1,26,741. In information technology, under the 120, you'll see things like 775,865 with purpose for the network security, Cisco, security enhancements, and the implementation of Microsoft Office. In the police, 485,000. This covers 12 vehicle replacements. In fire, 1,862,405. This is in groups of vehicle machinery and equipment, as well as in EMS. Public works, 273,250, also in the categories of vehicle machinery and equipment. Parks and rec, 151,828, lakefront, pool, and park improvements. And in debt service, 854,446. This is the principal and interest on existing debt. And finally, in contingency, we have 749,529 as needed. In the gas tax fund, this is one of the items that you will have on your addendum package. We are providing 500,000 for street lighting, materials for road repairs, and 1,230,000 for paving, sidewalk, and traffic projects, excuse me. And it has a fund reserve of 262,668. In your packet, what you'll find is actually for fund number 1110, which is where we do the community group grants. It is actually the, excuse me, it is your two sheets. I guess they don't have a title, but they're blue. And you should have one that says agency name. I am going to note to you what is in budget for the 110 this year, as well as an update of the rollover or fund balance that you had last year and the accounts of that. So, currently in fiscal-
Where are we? What page?
The addendum does not have a page. It's just the two sheets there.
I don't seem to have that.
You write there. Yep. Both of them. You got them both in your hand. That's right. So, just very quick, in the 110, and we'll see it across on the budget, we budgeted $150,000 of community agent grants, which you'll soon receive to vote on, that you're used to. It goes to places like a Hero for Kids, things of that nature. That will continue on for fiscal year '22. In fiscal year '21, you see how much was paid, a possible grant award was 119. You guys rolled over 30,949 in fiscal year '21. The second sheet demonstrates that we took, at the beginning of the new fiscal year, that 30,949 roller, and we have paid people such as for the St. Cloud Festival, Safety First Pediatrics, Yosemite Valley Livestock, Florida Farm, and many of the Boy Scouts and the St. Cloud High School, different programs, leaving a contingency balance right now of $3,949. Okay? With that being said, in the 110, again, $150,000 have been awarded for community agent grants, 26,000 for Foundation for Education, again. On the council and aging for utility assistance, 30,000. And finally, for miscellaneous contributions, $44,000. That is a highlight of your one, your fund 110 and commensurate to your community agent grants for fiscal year '21-22. All right.
Are you following?
I'm sorry. I am lost of what pages you're reading off. I mean, I get this, but you're reading a lot of things. I don't know where, if you could tell us page numbers and things, like, I don't know. Sure. Okay. So, the addendum, that's why I mentioned to you, is what I was reading off of. And I just listed for you. I didn't read it off any page here. I just listed how it matches to your one, your fund 110 budget this year. That's all. So, I just referenced to you what monies you normally approve in the 110 for the addendum and how much contingency dollars you have left over after paying and what in your fiscal year '22 budget that matches to. Clear as mine?
Clear as mine.
All right. We'll revisit it one more time.
I, I was following it until you said some $44,000. I didn't know where that was. I just-
That's in your fiscal '22 budget as miscellaneous contributions that I'm just reading out loud to you. I will, I will show them to you. I just want to make note for the record for you. Okay? All right. We're on page 18, utility funds. These are your enterprise funds. Water, sewer, sanitation, and stormwater, all categorized by personnel, operating capital, debt service, transfers, and contingencies. Water at 17,980,188. Sewer, 15,707,698. Sanitation at 14,65,426. And stormwater at 2,501,896.
Stormwater, does that include the, I thought we got a grant, a couple of grants over the past couple of years? When do those flow into the?
We only recognize grant funding when it, we have expenditures to spend out. So, some of the, I think the Indiana, the Indiana grant is, is already, as far as whatever expenditures we've had up to date, we've recognized that amount of revenue. But in '22, we don't have expenditures just yet. So, we won't recognize that until we start expending that and receiving the reimbursement for it.
Okay. So, we don't think a Spree or Indiana will happen this year or this coming year? I thought those were fast track, that's why.
Hi. Kevin Talbot here, interim public works director. Right now, the Illinois pipe is being bid out. There were some questions about the environmental portion of that. We're hoping to be able to have that awarded within the next 60 days. It's currently being bid out. The Esprit Pond area there, we have bid it out. And we still are evaluating the, the packages that have come in for them. So, like I said, so that is in the process of being evaluated. And then we also have the Blackberry Creek, which is currently being permitted. It's a possibility that the Blackberry Creek may have some different areas. But we're going to have to go back out for grants then because the Blackberry Creek is just for design portions of it. And then we'll have to go back and reapply for the construction portion of that.
Okay. So, do you think Indiana or Esprit will be constructed this year?
The Illinois pipe may, we may award before this, this calendar year, or it, it may be rolled over into next year. But like I said, but I believe it's what he was saying, that the, the budget itself is actually, the CIP is set up with the 2021 CIP. So, we may, may roll it over there, but it's in our current budget.
Okay.
We funded it with contingency dollars. And when he receives and actually spends, we'll get the reimbursement back and recoup that money back into contingency. But it's funded with contingency dollars in '21.
Stormwater contingency or general fund contingency?
General fund contingency.
Okay. Anything else? Moving on.
Page 19, the building fund. Obviously, this is your 460 fund. It's in association with the Florida Building Code. The budget is 4,153,134. 3 million, 3.86 million of that, or 92% of that is in building permits. 160,000 of it comes from miscellaneous fees, 89,818 in technology fees, and 30,000 in operating interest. Equally balanced on the next page is the expenditures as well at 4,153,134. As you're aware, we normally have the personnel recap. But I'll read you what applies to this fund here. At the end, you get your recaps for all funds across the city, which would be the 18 positions proposed. For this case, it includes two new positions, one senior building inspector, one plans examiner to accommodate the increase in service need. Personnel cost was at 2,200,002, operating cost at 1.5 million, and 110,000 for capital outlay. 21, informationals on 22, 23, and 24 are your org charts and fund structures, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And we begin with fund summaries on page 26. I am not going to walk through every line item with you, right? These are all your, all your funds through revenue budget, pulling out fund balance for your revenues. On the next page, your expenditures for all funds, pulling out contingency and giving you that 171,269,590 in revenue equated to expenditures. 29, 30. And let me know if there's one that you specifically would like me to. I'm just trying to save you time as we get into the variances. 31, 32 are all schedules for the different funds that you shall see when we go through all the variances. Is there any questions on any of these pages up until we get to variances that I may answer for you? Or would you like me to go over something specifically? This is just the, all the dollars reported different ways for you. Okay?
On, I had a question on page 32 and 33. The, oh, you see in our local fund, revenue did not match the expenditure. Oh, that's in the amended budget from last year.
Yes, sir.
I know what happened there.
You're, we're not done just yet. So, it's still, we probably haven't classified something to just balance it out. It should always be net zero, but there's probably some fall off there. But your proposed does match, which is?
Right. And then, on the 1% tax, are we able to hold contingency on that? Or is that to be spent on capital every year?
No, we can hold contingency.
Okay. Because last year, we're holding, we're holding 2.7 million from contingency from last year's project?
Okay. Where we are, revenue reports, page 46. Page 47 is all your funds, giving you actual performance through fiscal year '19 and '20. Your year to date is your third column, per actual performance to date. And then fiscal year '21 is your budgeted amount. And in the lavender slash to some people blue is the fiscal year '21-22 proposed. Again, through all funds, 171,269,590. 59,71,184 will be your general fund. The following page is, again, your proposed expenditures for all funds. Again, balanced at 171 mil and going through funds one through, of course, the general fixed asset fund of 900. For your review was the proposed revenues by fund. This is going through every revenue, beginning with the general fund and its performance of actuals even fiscal year '19 and '20 and year to date performance in '21, with budgeted numbers in fiscal year '21, and then your proposed again in '21-22. The general fund ends on page 51 for your detailed of revenue accounts by fund. And you move forward into your 420, your water fund on page 52, with again, a budget of 17,980,188. If I'm going too fast, please let me know. I'm just trying to keep you all awake and happy. So, page 53 is the sewer fund revenue performance at 15,707,698 is the proposed fiscal year '21-22 budget. The sanitation fund on page 54 at 14,65,000- The sanitation fund on page 54 at $14,65,426. Page 55, your building fund, building, excuse me, fund number 460, at $3,853,554. Those are the detailed listings of all your revenues for your major funds. All right, now we start cooking. We are going to begin with the general fund, starting with council. Variance is about, above 10,000, they will be at the end of each of the sections if they do have a variance. In your, and I will note them as we get there, in your addendum or your items that you were given, there was variances, excuse me, variance reports for environmental utilities. I will note them when we get to those pages. They were changed and updated because we found some inconsistencies or we missed something, and we fixed that for you, so you have the right record. And I will note it when we get there for you, okay? Okay, council, Division 1000, city council, page 58. We have a variance. I did not put any variances on salaries, FICA, so we didn't have to do it a million times. It is all based on the new positions that came up, plus the 1% and 2% merit that we're giving caused the increases in salaries and payroll burn. So you will not see that there. If you have a specific question of that, we can answer that for you. In city council, page 58, element number 6300, if you need me to tell you the element, it will be improvements in capital expenditures on page 57 for 200,000. Explanations, as I read them through, this was moved from element 64 for remodeling of the council chambers. Account number 64-00, $71,000 variance for council chambers presentation system upgrade. You will also see a professional services, 242,500 difference comparative to fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2022. The main difference was a new studies code change was removed. 436,650 was this year's budget with a increase, or excuse me, a decrease of 242,500.
To increase.
Increase, increase, increase of 242,500.
And what is that, new studies code changes per DCM?
We actually added a contingency. Sorry, we actually added a contingency of $200,000 if the council requested a study. That would be only at your direction. Throughout the year, you guys have requested different studies or things like that. We want to make sure we don't have to go back with a budgetment, we can get that study enacted right away. But that would be only at your call, you know, I'm going to commit to not touching that unless I get three of you to tell me to move forward.
Okay. That takes care of city council. There are no variances to report in the finance committee, that's page 59.
I have a question.
Question.
Wendy, you, you maybe already said this. So the, the dollars for the council chamber upgrades and things like that, what fund is that from?
The general fund, the general fund.
This whole, this whole page is the general fund?
Yes, ma'am. We are reviewing the, the general fund first.
Does it say that somewhere? It says general fund somewhere?
It says, well, it's the division department budget level, so it says city council, but your fund number is at the beginning at 001. So it doesn't say general fund, but our first report is the general fund. In legal services, which is page 60, explanation for element number 31-03, it's $42,000 retainer for additional attorney hours is your only variance to report. Administrative, administrative support, 2030, has no variances over 10,000 to report. City manager, page 63, variances are on page 65. The only one is account number 46-01 for 56,500. This is for the open gov software maintenance contract. Public information, page 66, Division 3015, variances for element number 42-00, 29,950 is the community newsletter. 46-01, 28,311 is moved TVIs from another element, added Granicus Agenda Software Annual Contract. And for element number 47-00, 44,385 for the community newsletter.
And so, and then the postage went up too, so 75,000 for community newsletter? I guess that's just mailing all residents, or?
Correct. And again, we were hitting it in social media, through the periodicals, the newspapers, and also the community newsletters mailed out. Because we have people, as I explained to the finance committee, that are not computer savvy. They may not see that. And so we're going to put it in a different format, different media.
Page 68, the city clerk, division and department, department and division 3016. Variance on page 70, element 31-00, $75,000 increase. This is the increase due to an addition of city code. 46-01, 15,950 from fiscal year 21. They brought it in from element 64 to continue the maintenance costs, and that will be expensed out of 4601. So they had a variance because they moved it from element 64 to 4601. Human resources, department division 3020.
Funds.
Do you have a question?
Sorry, no. It was behind one page.
In human resources, page 73, we also like to call them a little bit of an overachiever. They also did reductions of over 10,000 for you. Obviously, I'm not going over any FICA pension or health insurance, but we start with professional services, a reduction of $75,000 due to the compensation study contract being removed. In 31-01, medical care, physicals, a reduction of 10,642. This is the reduction of pre-employment costs due to the in-house clinic now in place. And then 4601 in maintenance contracts, 43,035 increase. This is due to the new learning management system and the personnel record keeping system. In 4930, tuition reimbursement, $25,000 increase, promotion of education reimbursement to assist with retention and skills gained. 4950, employee incentive, an increase of 15,200. This is a transfer from the city manager's account for the employee engagement and new spirit squad activities. 5500 in training, 10,393. This is a transfer from the city manager's account for training in the efforts of divert, diversity training? Sorry. And then 3101, self-insured medical, 1,235,733. This was budgeted in prior, prior year, did not account for increase in staffing as well as claims that are projected. And the self-insured admin fee, this is not part of your general, but they included it because it's your 520 fund, and your 520 fun, fun is for your health insurance and your workers' comp, but they included since they manage that fund as well, so let me clarify that. 65,700 in cost savings with the new carrier being Cigna. 3107, the wellness program, that's a 57,400. 100,000 will be reimbursed by the new carrier for wellness activities. This is the amount, this amount is not actually an increase to the funds. And 45-00, insurance, increase of 133,133,609. This is the actuarial projection of the stop-loss, stop-loss increase. 3510, administration for procurement, then you'll have, on page 75, procurement services. And on page 76, warehouse, there are no variances to report, over 10,000. Page 77, we have finance, accounting, grants, and utility billing with variances located on page 82. Finance having a variance in 31-00, professional services for the amount of 122,100. This increase is due to the addition of the ERP consulting to begin the implementation of a new ERP for the city.
What's ERP?
I was going to say, can you explain ERP?
Sure, the ERP is a financial reporting and system. It's your AS400, your J.D. Edwards, your accounting system. With all the modules, everybody's ready to move on to a better and newer system, and they want to get out of the green screen and get this new rock and roll, a little bit more BI intelligence. So we're going to do that.
And what's the, is it just 200,000 for the consultant, and then you just pretty much have to pay that forever and ever to keep them managing?
It's 200,000 for the initial consultation, then we budgeted 3 and 400,000 respectively over two years to deploy, consult, build the financial trees, and then support for year two and three. So it's a three-year project.
900,000 total?
900,000 total across three. Yeah, sure.
Today's dollars.
3200 audit fees, an increase of 84,000. This is the allocation of audit fees. In previous years, we always do administrative allocations for all the funds that pay into, and we were allocating it out to different, to the building fund to pay a portion of the audit fees where we're already taking in an administrative fee, we're kind of double charging them, we fix that. So finance will pay for everything because we get reimbursed through the admin allocation. So that's why it increased because we absorbed all that cost. This includes the, the audit for the CRA and the, any standalone loans we may have. So it's 84,000 increase overall, just because we're allocating correctly as it should have been before. And then?
And then our finance, the C squared investment portfolio management consultant, 74,000. I think it was 6,500 last year?
Yes, is that, we grabbed them to manage our portfolio.
How much do we actually, we make out of the portfolio without actively managing?
So right now, we've only given them a portion of our portfolio to see, just because we're getting great return from SunTrust that they can't match at about basis points. So we've given them about quarter? Yeah, like a quarter of our portfolio, so they have 25 million in. The goal is to have them give us a rate of return in which they pay for their, their increase in, in our cost.
Yeah, that's what I was worried is, sometimes you end up paying more for them to manage it than they actually make.
Oh, don't worry, deputy mayor.
Your, your, your investment risk tolerance is very low.
They know, when they report, I will squeeze every dollar till they, they will not yet. We won't give them more until they can pay for themselves. So they got to make that, and we'll know that once we get more. They just started actually managing, and we just gave them over that, so.
I hope so. 25 million, and they can't make 100,000? There's a problem. Right, there's a problem there.
Page 83, information, information systems, 4510. It goes through to page, excuse me, 85. IT includes information technology as well as your GIS division, 4512. I will read those variances, beginning with professional services, 16,639 and 31-00. An increase to include the Gartner Research and Advisory Service. In 3400, other contractual services, a reduction of 193,652. This is a decrease due to no longer needing to utilize temp services for unfilled. 4601, maintenance contracts, 13,613, an increase to include checkpoint maintenance. Operating supplies in 5200, an increase of 96,96, includes replacement of monitors and peripherals citywide. In training, 55-00, an increase of 37,700. This includes citywide central square applications training and the New Horizon Tech training. In 6400, equipment and machinery, an increase of 183K. This is the citywide PC laptop tablet and new, for replacement and new PCs, laptops, and tablets. In the GIS, 00145-12, professional services, 3100, is 96,339 increase. This is the use of GIS Incorporated tech support and the ESRI portal expansion. In training, an increase of 15,000, element number 55-00. This includes a citywide ESRI GIS training and AutoCAD training. Located in this page as well, and we'll see it in, in the following pages, is fund number 120. For IT, they had a decrease in professional services in that fund of 13,205. This is due to no longer requiring this funding amount. And then 4601, maintenance contracts within the 120, 775,865. This is due to the additional maintenance contracts for the network security, the servers, the telephony, Office 365 implementation that you saw in the summarized version of the 120 as to what that funding will be used for.
I've got an IT question, since you guys never get questions. To, to, for some of the cybersecurity insurance policies, you have to have two-step verification. Are we implementing that with the new machines, whether it's Face ID or whatever?
Hello, this is G. Chael. Thank you for that question regarding the multi-factor authentication.
Multi-factor, there you go.
So it's based on mostly remote access, right? When someone, you know, comes in via virtual private network. So those folks, we were intending to install that capability to, that way you can authenticate with a third party or biometrics or a random number or random key to allow you to get better, secure access.
Okay, so anytime we have someone work from home, they have that capability?
Correct, and all, any kind of mobile devices really, right?
Okay.
Moving on to page 87, this is community development, department division 5410. Page 89, you'll find first variance, 3100, professional services, an increase, excuse me, decrease of 307,903. This was a budget transfer, was completed in order to provide funding for the comprehensive plan and LDC updates, which increased the budget, therefore not showing a major decrease.
And with this, are we getting all of the comp plan elements updated? Will this finalize them all? Future land use too? Okay, got a thumbs up.
In 3400, under contractual services, 106,775 reduction. This was due to the urgent need to hire temporary staff to cover the needs of the department during the pandemic. 40-00, travel and per diem, an increase of 20,899. Post-pandemic, staff are now able to travel for professional development. In 4601, maintenance contracts, a reduction in 26,000, of 26,944. This was due to reconstruct, restructuring of the department, allocating specific maintenance contracts to different and newly created divisions, planning, the planning division, the zoning division, and the housing division. In layman's terms, they took the money that was in community development and allocated over to their new divisions that we've created that you'll see, which is zoning and housing and human development. So that's why there's a reduction there. As you can see here, it comes on page 90, the new zoning, 5415 division. As you'll see, all zeros on actual performance as it was created in this fiscal year, and they've allocated operating expenditures as well. In the zoning department, in the element of 3400, other contractual services, there was an increase of 25,000. This was again, a re- was an increase of $25,000, this was again a restructuring, all these three items that I'm going to read are the restructuring of these departments and allocating specific budget to them. That is the case in 4900, which is other current charges, an increase of $10,000. And then 5500, training, $12,100 was the increase there with the restructuring of this division. Moving along to housing and human services, again, this is a new division with 5420. And on page 93, you will see those allocations included with professional services of $57,075, this was the increase again to the newly created division of housing. 4601, maintenance contracts, $12,750, operating supplies, 5200, an increase of $12,000. Operating expenditures, the CDBG under 83-01, $300,000, this is under grants and other aids. Operating expenditures again for $200,083,02 is your element, is the CDBGCV, this is again created for the housing division under grants and aids. And finally, 8303, operating expenditures for the CDBG ship, $133,773, under grants and other aids. Page 94 walks us into building maintenance. As the city manager noted at the beginning, this is an operational change, this division has been, or will be transferred October 1st to public works, hence 5520 is the division. Variances for this department are located in 96, page 96, beginning with contractual services, $173,569, it's the outsourcing of the custodial staff based on attrition. Rentals and leases, element number 44-00, $11,000, rentals for portable ACs and trucks, um, excuse me, for portable AC units and box trucks as needed. 46-00, under repairs and maintenance, increase of $140,372, we added funds to cover the cost of the, of any emergency electrical and AC repairs as needed. 4601, maintenance contracts, $103,550, this is the generator maintenance contrast cost that's increased. 5200, operating supplies, 52,650, this is for the Arroclave solution needed to sanitize the city's facilities. 6400, $155,954, adding a cargo van for the new havoc technician, an AC replacement for multiple city buildings, and a replacement of the maintenance generator. In 6200, in capital outlay, $825,545 increase, this is the control replacement system for the city and due to the re-roof of multiple city facilities this year. Finally, under the 6400, machinery and equipment, $15,500 is the replacement of two city vehicles Page 97 has code enforcement, this again is an operational change as well, code enforcement will be built, excuse me, moving to the building department, division number 5526. I have no variances over 10,000 at this point for them, and they are still under, they were put under the beginning of police, but they've, their division has been changed. Page 98 is the police, 6010, with variances located on page 100. Communication services, 41-00, is the first increase of $12,938, this is for additional cellular devices and intel dedicated to the data network. 4601, maintenance contracts, $107,157, increase is related to one solution, the citywide radio cost, and new intel video software maintenance for fuches. 46-02, vehicle maintenance, $44,250, this is the vehicle allocation cost increase for this year. 49-35, tuition and sponsorship, an $18,000 increase in support of police officer sponsorships at the academy. 5200, operating supplies, $118,998, this is an increase in product costs as well as SWAT equipment, body worn cameras, ballistics, and replacements of intel cameras. 52-02, vehicle fuel, $18,997 increase in cost per gallon. 52-16, uniform exempt from wages, this was $16,800 in increase for the purchase of new uniform replacements. In training, 55-00, $27,410 for the advanced courses for specialized personnel. And finally, in 6400, machinery and equipment, $214,267, this is the purchase of police vote, boat, vehicle equipment, laptop computers, the front lobby kiosk, ATV, and other vital capital equipment.
Is there any questions?
For the police, I know it's probably not in this part, are we even looking at a new facility for them, or where are we at with that?
We're in the selection phase right now of a company to do the architectural spatial needs analysis, is that the proper word? Yes, we are.
Okay, all right, just double checking.
Any other questions?
We have dinner provided, and so let's take a break, I assume we're ready to trudge on after dinner. With that, we will be adjourned for about 30 minutes, hopefully.
Hey, Bill, can I ask you a question?